I'll now call in Mr. Wall for the staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Porter, and thank you, members of the public, for joining us this evening at this compact hearing to provide testimony on the proposed changes to transit facilities at the Tacoma Metro Rail station. I am Stan Wall, Director of Real Estate and Station Planning at Metro. This presentation is the same as the hard copy that was made available to you as you arrived this evening. I'll be walking through nine topics to provide context for this evening's hearing. Background and overview of existing conditions, a summary of the station access analysis, a review of proposed concept plan, an overview of how the project addresses accessibility, a review of circulation by all modes, an overview of our proposed interim parking approach, a summary of the traffic analysis, and finally, a quick review of next steps that will follow this hearing. On March 27th of this year, Womata's Board of Directors authorized a negotiation execution of an amended and restated Tacoma Joint Development Sales Agreement and the holding of this public hearing as required by the Womata Compact among its member jurisdictions to receive public comment on the proposed changes. Existing facilities and proposed changes and the reasons for the changes are described in a docket that has been made available to the public online at www.womata.com/hearings, and hard copies have been made available at the library in Tacoma Park, Maryland and Tacoma Park, D.C. There are also a few hard copies of the docket available this evening for review at this Existing conditions at the Tacoma station consist of an elevated metro rail station with two entrances, the one to the north having elevator access to the platform, and the one to the south having escalator access to the platform, a kiss-and-ride lot with access from Eastern Avenue containing 141 metered spaces, six reserved ADA spaces for disabled customers, three motorcycle spaces, five A spaces for waiting motorists, and five additional spaces. There are nine bus bays with access from both Eastern Avenue and Cedar Street, and there are bicycle facilities consisting of bike racks accommodating 104 bicycles and bike lockers for up to 60 bicycles. The proposed changes result from the findings of the station access analysis and a proposed housing development on part of the site and from community input informing that proposed development. Metro staff focus first on assessing transit access requirements and potential enhancement to those requirements. Findings and recommendations of this analysis included: the existing metered lot is only used 50 percent of its capacity, and other parking facilities are adequate for the foreseeable future; though it would be desirable to have additional curbside queuing space for passenger pickup; two remaining pedestrian desire lines should be accommodated by dedicated walkways across the grassy area east of the bus base to Eastern Avenue and Cedar Avenue, and across the parking lot from the bus base to the northern entrance of the parking lot. As the station currently has high bicycle ridership, future plans should accommodate additional expansion of bicycle facilities. Consideration should be given to adding a new bus bay so that an existing bus bay might be used for passenger drop-off, and though there are no currently private shuttles providing service to the station, with future development including the Walter Reed campus, provision should be made for new spaces for shuttle access. An earlier development proposal took up an extensive portion of the site, including most of the existing open space area, and resulted in an expensive reconfiguration of Womata bus bays and parking facilities. Following consultation with local community leaders and the developer, Womata proposed an apartment complex in the space now occupied by the kiss-and-ride lot without disruption to the existing open space area or the bus loop that surrounds the open space. The resulting plan for Womata facilities shown in the concept plan includes a kiss-and-ride lot with access from Eastern Avenue. The lot now contains 85 metered spaces, 27 spaces for taxis, shuttles, driver-tenant waiting spaces, and reserved spaces for people with disabilities, and drop-off areas for customers. The proposed plan also shows a new bike station for 105 bikes that will be installed by Womata, an additional bus bay, and a layover bay and pedestrian sidewalks through the open space area and through the new kiss-and-ride lot connecting to Eastern Avenue. These conform to the recommendations that were found in the access analysis. This cross-section shows a cutaway view through the building to provide a better understanding of how the proposed new kiss-and-ride lot will be located below the proposed building toward the north entrance of the metro rail station. The proposed kiss-and-ride lot also has enough height to accommodate future shuttle buses in the kiss-and-ride lot. On this slide, a parking accessibility diagram is shown comparing the existing and proposed distances for the reserved spaces and drop-off area for people with disabilities. The new location of the accessible spaces will be approximately 120 feet from the elevator entrance of the station, 30 feet closer than today's accessible spaces. The proposed curbside accessible drop-off will be approximately 65 feet distance from the station entrance. Circulation by pedestrians, residential parking, metro parking, and buses is depicted on this page. Coming out of the recommendations from the station access analysis, one of the most significant enhancements will be to upgrade informal pedestrian paths to paved sidewalks throughout the open space. Further, we've also accommodated walkways through the kiss-and-ride parking area to enable safe passage for pedestrians through the building to Eastern Avenue. During the construction of the replacement kiss-and-ride lot, anticipated to last approximately 20 months, the kiss-and-ride lot will be considerably reduced. Approximately 50 spaces will be available for parking in contrast to the 160 spaces that are total spaces that are currently available. Pickup and drop-off of passengers can occur curbside as is informally done at the present. The interim parking plan is shown in this page. As the developer has zoning and building entitlement processes to go through, it is not likely that construction would start on the project for another two to three years. Womata also conducted a traffic analysis to assess the expected impact of the proposed development on the kiss-and-ride lot, bus operations, and surrounding streets. The analysis is described in the Tacoma Metro Station Traffic Analysis Technical Memorandum April 2014 that was provided as an exhibit in the docket. The traffic analysis concludes that the proposed development will add only 44 and 54 vehicles respectively in the morning and evening peak periods, a negligible addition to the existing and projected traffic. To improve overall traffic conditions, whether or not development at Tacoma Station happens, the traffic analysis suggests optimizing signal timing in the vicinity of the site and providing lane configuration improvements including adding a 100-foot-long right-turn pocket on the westbound Carroll Street before Cedar Street, and eliminating curbside parking on northbound Piney Branch Road between Dahlia Street and Eastern Avenue. At this point in time, the public record is open. Any comments that are not provided through this evening's hearing must be received by 5:00 p.m. on June 30 via email or postal email per the instructions in the hearing notice. Womata staff will then compile all of these comments and provide responses, and circulate them in the form of a draft report for public comment in September. The final compact hearing report will conclude a recommendation to amend the adopted regional system plan, and the report and amended plan will be subject to Womata Board approval. After board approval, the developer will then begin the formal pursuit of the D.C. entitlements through the planned unit development process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Now we'll go on to public comments. As I said, I'm going to start with the elected officials. Is Danielle Perry representing Congressman Chris Van Hollen here?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Perry. I'm here representing Congressman Chris Van Hollen. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have a letter from Congressman Van Hollen that he would like to be read into the docket. Dear Womata Board, I'm writing on behalf of my constituents in the city of Tacoma Park to express concerns about the joint development agreement under consideration on the Tacoma Park metro site. As I understand it, the Womata intends to sell property adjacent to the metro station and located in the District of Columbia to a private developer for a multifamily residential development. While the developer has made significant improvements over the initial design proposed several years ago, my constituents continue to have serious concerns about the impact of the development on the neighborhood, which includes parts of both the District of Columbia and Maryland, and is part of a National Register Historic Districts in both jurisdictions. As you know, the current plan presents higher densities and greater heights than the Tacoma Park Central District Plan adopted in 2002 and incorporated into the current comprehensive plan. While I understand that Womata's primary focus has been on transportation elements of the plan, the process at Womata's presence presents a critical avenue for my constituents who do not currently have party status in the D.C. planned unit development process to be heard on a development that has significant impacts on their neighborhood. Additionally, a number of their concerns, including pedestrian safety around the position of the building's loading dock, and the increase in residential parking spaces, have an impact on transit functionality and revenue. Of particular concern is an independent traffic analysis that says that the traffic study provided from Womata significantly understands the traffic impacts that will be generated by the development. I ask that you respond to the issues raised in that report, and if justified, prepare an amended Womata traffic report. Any project in this space should endeavor to maximize utilization of the Tacoma Park metro station and limit additional vehicular traffic. Additionally, I call your attention to the station's unique position within the District of Columbia's Tacoma Park National Register District and adjacent to Maryland's Tacoma Park National Register District. Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act calls on federal agencies, including the Federal Transit Administration, to take into account the effects of projects on historic properties and resolve adverse effects. I expect that this review will be part of the development process and ask that you keep me informed on its progress. Given the direct impact of this project on my constituents in the city of Tacoma Park, I ask that you continue to work with local residents to come to a mutually agreeable result prior to final Womata Board approval of the joint development agreement. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, Chris Van Hollen, Member of Congress.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Can I ask if people not applaud each speaker? It'll cut into the time that we've got for people to speak, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Is Tom Hucker here? He was speaking on behalf of District 20, and I see State Senator Jamie Raskin is here. Are you here in his place, or would you like to speak in his place? Shall we skip you and go on?
Yes. In case you could give us a minute.
All right. If there are elected officials who I call, when I call them, they're not here, what we'll do is we'll wait until they get here, and then we can move them into the queue at that point. Mayor Bruce Williams?
My name is Bruce Williams. I'm mayor of the city of Tacoma Park. Thank you for providing this opportunity to comment on the proposed changes to the Tacoma Metro Station. The Tacoma Metro Station is a primary gateway to our community. A large percentage of our residents use the station on a regular basis, and Tacoma Park homes on Eastern Avenue look directly at the station and the site of the proposed development. Maintaining easy access to the Tacoma Metro Station is critical to the city of Tacoma Park, and because of its location, so is ensuring that any development on the property is attractive and well-designed. Because the Tacoma Metro is such a critical facility to residents and businesses throughout Tacoma Park, the city of Tacoma Park has monitored the development proposals at the site from the beginning and has consistently provided comments that are factual and constructive. City Council Resolution 2013-68 is attached to our testimony and represents our position on the proposal being considered today. Tacoma Park was built around transit in the late 1800s. Our community continues to strongly support transit and walkable communities. As noted in the access analysis provided by Womata, 55 percent of the people entering the Tacoma Park metro station come by walking to the station, and 29 percent come by bus, primarily ride-on. Many other transit riders come by bicycle or dropped off at one of the two station entrances. In the final design for development of the Tacoma Metro Site, the access by pedestrians, bicyclists, handicapped patrons, and bus riders should be easy, safe, comfortable, and attractive, and the transit facilities must be of an adequate capacity to accommodate the community's transit needs for decades. The access analysis provides helpful data and recommendations concerning pedestrian, bicycle, and bus access for the transit facilities. Special attention should be paid to the need for wide sidewalks where pedestrians want to walk, benches for those who need to rest, convenient parking and drop-off areas for handicapped patrons, a good pathway for and connections to the Metropolitan Branch Trail, and sufficient bicycle parking. There should also be enough short-term parking spaces for transit users so that our residents can continue to find a space to park at the metro station to go downtown for appointment. Any development of the property should be compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods in Tacoma Park, Maryland, and Washington, D.C. Tacoma Park City Councilmember Seth Grimes will present comments concerning development impacts on surrounding neighborhoods. Councilmember Grimes represents Ward 1 immediately adjacent to the Tacoma Metro Station. In general, Tacoma Park is concerned with the massing and design of the proposed building along Eastern Avenue and with maintaining green parkland on the property. We're also concerned about traffic congestion on Eastern Avenue that the traffic analysis shows will worsen from Piney Branch Road to the metro property and for which no recommendations for improvement were proposed. Redevelopment of the Tacoma Metro Station property will establish the image of Tacoma, D.C., and Tacoma Park, Maryland for decades. We want to see our gateway be designed and constructed to the highest standards. The whole area around the station should function smoothly as a transit hub. The building and site should be very attractive and meet LEED standards for environmental design, and the redevelopment should complement the surrounding neighborhoods. Because of the critical role of the metro station in our community, we ask to be a partner in the design and design review process, and we ask for the Womata Board's assistance in assuring that a partnership is a reality. Thank you for this opportunity to comment on the proposed changes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark Elrich?
Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to come and speak today, and this, as I think the mayor knows, is something that I'm vaguely familiar with since we were dealing with this eight years ago when I left the city council. So, my formal statement was that I'm writing this to express concerns about the planned development project at Metro's Tacoma Station. As you may know, this site will affect not only D.C. residents but also many residents who live in Maryland in close proximity. Yet many of my constituents have indicated that there has been very little effort on the part of the developer to engage them. While they are generally supportive of smart growth, development near metro stations, they would like to have their voices heard on those aspects of the plan which will directly affect them. This is a reasonable request that I have wholeheartedly support. I request that you carefully consider concerns about whether the plan exceeds zoning limits is based on inadequate traffic study, is inconsistent with the Tacoma Park master plan, is too close to the street, is poorly designed, and is aesthetically incompatible with the residential historic district. I also request that the developer agree to the establishment of a neighborhood design working group which includes appropriate Maryland representation before you hold the final vote on the hearing record, and I hope you'll consider seriously the impacts of this development in our jurisdiction. I want to add a couple of, you know, other notes related to that. The first is the importance of the timing of when you make a deal. I mean, I've watched a lot of stuff in the county from the other side of the world of deal-making, and it is very hard to claw back from a developer the things that a community wants once a deal's been made. Your leverage and the community's leverage is before you make a deal, and having the community and the developer work together to get something that both of them want to ensure both that the deal can go to Womata without substantial amount of objection, that the developer won't face a long-term fight at the other end of the process. But in my experience, making deals first and hoping to negotiate a happy ending at the end of that doesn't always work so well. And the other thing I want to talk about is neighborliness. We had a development on Eastern Avenue in Montgomery County that was proposed, and I thought it was excessive, and the neighbors on the D.C. side of the line thought it was excessive, that it violated their understanding of what was going to be built on the Montgomery County side of the line, and that for years had been assured that there would not be these negative impacts on their neighborhood, and the county went ahead and was proposing to approve a plan that was, in their mind, very excessive, very tall, very dense. And I supported the neighbors, both on the Montgomery side and on the D.C. side, because I thought they had a right to a community on the terms of which they had, you know, bought there, moved there, lived there, and with the expectations that were in the master plans. And in a miracle of miracles, a court actually ruled in front of the neighbors and said what the planning board had done was unacceptable and violated people's expectations, and actually ruled in favor of the neighborhood groups. But the important point of that is we share borders, and I don't believe as a Montgomery County elected official that I should do things on my side of the border that have detrimental impacts on the Washington side of a border, and I would hope that the approach would be the same from the district, and I hope that Womata in general would look at places where we have shared interests. Friendship Heights is another place where we'd be really sensitive to what everybody feels about the project and not just say this is in one jurisdiction and so is the other, it's of no concern to anybody else. I think how we share space and how we develop together is really, really important, and I think we can go forward successfully. I've talked to a lot of the folks involved in this. Nobody is saying don't build anything, and nobody's saying you should only build single-family homes here, and that's the only thing that's compatible. There is a recognition, as there was eight years ago, the debate in Tacoma Park then wasn't whether you should build something on that property, the debate was the number of units, and it wasn't like zero or some tiny little number, it was a large number or a much larger number. And as I understand this discussion with the people I've talked to, they recognize that this is a good place for development, that we should take advantage of it, but that in that context, you really should pay attention to and be sensitive to the neighborhood around it. And I think it's possible to get units there and a decent number of units there and still respect the surrounding community in Tacoma Park, so I hope that Womata will consider that, but I really hope that you will avoid making a deal until you've got a better agreement. This has been going on for eight years, so I hardly see the rush to closing the deal as the letter from the developer suggested in the next few weeks. There is no need after eight years to rush into a deal. What there is need for is to, I think, get a broader community buy-in, so I thank you and look forward to following up on this.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next person is Councilmember Seth Grimes. Apologize for the problems with the microphone, I think. We have to deal with what's here at the site, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm Seth Grimes, the City of Tacoma Park Councilmember and the city's representative on the Transportation Planning Board of the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. The Tacoma Park ward I represent is directly adjacent to the Tacoma Metro Station. My constituents walk and bicycle to the station and occasionally drive there using the station's transit user parking spaces. They are heavy users of metro rail and the station's metro bus and ride-on buses, and I'll say it's great to see so many of my constituents and other Tacoma Park and Tacoma, D.C. neighbors here tonight. I do recognize a few people whom I know to support the current plan, just a handful in the audience, including Cheryl Court from the Advocacy Coalition for Smarter Growth, which is funded by the developer, EYA. Tacoma Park was founded in 1883 by Benjamin Franklin Gilbert. Gilbert bought land and sold lots in a Washington, D.C. and Maryland area surrounding a station on the Metropolitan Branch of the Baltimore and Ohio Railway. Tacoma Park was the region's first railroad suburb. B.F. Gilbert and Tacoma Park pioneered transit-oriented development in the Washington, D.C. region. We remain dedicated to transit-oriented development 130 years later. The city of Tacoma Park and the Tacoma Metro community will gladly welcome true transit-oriented development. The proposed EYA building does not qualify. I urge Womata to reject the building and to compel the developer to create a building that instead favors transit users, integrated with rather than in defiance of the surrounding neighborhoods, working in true cooperation with stakeholders rather than in the opposition that we have experienced to date. The Maryland residential neighborhoods closest to the Tacoma Transit Facility consist almost exclusively of single-family homes, including directly across Eastern Avenue Northwest from the planned development. The nearby Washington, D.C. residences are single-family homes and small-scale apartments. Our historic designation is official. The Washington, D.C. and Maryland residential neighborhoods and the old Tacoma Commercial Corridor and the Tacoma Metro Station are within United States National Register Historic Districts. The Tacoma Metro parcel that would be developed is split between two zoning designations: residential, fronting Eastern Avenue Northwest with a height limit imposed by zoning of 40 feet, and commercial on the rear of the property toward the metro and railroad tracks with a 50-foot limit. A nearby Tacoma neighborhood commercial overlay district was created in 2005, years after this project first surfaced, with a height limit of 55 feet, and this parcel was not included in that overlay. Clearly, it's the intention of the Washington, D.C. government that the development not rise to the 72 feet currently proposed in a 40-foot zone by EYA. Scale matters. Neighborhood compatibility and impact matter. Transitions matter. They matter to residents, and as embodied in the site zoning in the historic district regulations and the Tacoma Central District Plan, they regulate factors that include height, setbacks, and compatibility. They govern development at the site, therefore they must be considered by Womata. Height 80 percent in excess of zoning limits with massing of five stories just 23 feet from Eastern Avenue, even with the upper two stories set back an additional 8 to 10 feet, all within a residential zone, fails compatibility. The current building design includes a multi-level parking deck in the rear of the building with far too many residential parking spaces, a ratio of four spaces for each six units, given the location next to a transit station. A Washington, D.C. zoning rewrite currently underway would reduce the required parking ratio for a site in close proximity like this one to a transit station to 1 to 6, rather than 4 to 6, a quarter of the ratio EYA proposes. The excess of residential parking will cost Womata transit user revenue. It is a direct contribution to the excessive size of the building and to the traffic and transit user parking impact which Womata Commission studies already underestimate. If the developer reduced the number of residential parking spaces or located them under the building like every other recently constructed apartment building in the Tacoma Metro area, the building size could be reduced. Further, there would be fewer new cars on surrounding residential streets answering community concerns about traffic impact that will hamper metro and ride-on buses that use those same streets. Excessive residential parking creates the need for three lanes of surface driveways to the rear of the building. Space for these driveways comes at the expense of transit user parking and buffers to the neighboring apartment building. The proposal reduces the number of metered parking spaces for transit users from 114 to 85. Fewer transit user parking spaces will mean reduced use of Tacoma Transit Facilities, and again, lower transit resident revenue. The issues can be fixed. I ask Womata to create a new neighborhood design working group and mandate that the developer work with that group and the city of Tacoma Park and other concerned parties to the satisfaction of those parties to revise the design before Womata accepts the compact hearing report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. State Senator Jamie Raskin?
Yes. Sorry about that. We're trying to create injuries here. No problem. Thank you, Mayor Porter. Delighted to be here with the board. With your permission, I'll just use about 90 seconds and save the rest for Delegate Hucker, who's on his way, if that's okay.
Okay.
So, but I am introducing a letter on behalf of the legislative delegation from District 20, which is Delegate Hucker, Delegate Sheila Hickson, and Delegate Heather Mazzier, as well as myself, and I'm the state senator for the delegation, and we're, I'm not going to read the whole letter, but essentially, we're just asking the board to schedule action on approval of the report for the compact hearing on the development only after there's been more comprehensive consideration of the concerns that have been raised about how the proposed development will affect the adjacent residential neighborhoods, both on the Maryland side and in D.C. And we're convinced that a neighborhood design working group launched by EYA and representatives of affected neighborhoods in cooperation with the board would ensure balanced consideration of neighbors' concerns and their ideas about how to make the development a complete success for the community. While we have been and remain very supportive of residential development at the metro site, we're concerned the project has not yet been subjected to a level of review sufficient to ensure that the board has all the information necessary to move to final approval, and as elected officials in Maryland, we believe for several reasons that it might be premature for Womata to take action at this point, sending the development proposal to the planned unit development process. And the letter just outlines several reasons why we think this might be one additional step, not as some kind of delaying game you could build at times certain into it, but just so the kinds of concerns that you're hearing raised tonight can be more thoroughly ventilated and then integrated into the proposal. And with that, I will leave further substantive remarks to Delegate Hucker when he comes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Sarah Green?
Good evening, Mayor Porter. Mr. Wall, sorry, I don't know your name, sir.
Blair Fishburne.
Mr. Fishburne. Good evening. My name is Sarah Green, and I am the Advisory Neighborhood Commissioner for 4B01 in the District of Kaladia. This is a corridor of about 2,000 people, including a whole lot of people on Eastern Avenue who are
Blair Fishburne.
Mr. Fishburne. Good evening. My name is Sarah Green, and I am the Advisory Neighborhood Commissioner for 4B01 in the District of Kaladia. This is a corridor of about 2,000 people, including a whole lot of people on Eastern Avenue who are incredibly affected by this project. And this includes people who live in apartments, they live in a cooperative, they're homeowners, in a cooperative apartment building on Eastern Avenue. Many of these people have lived, whether they're owners of apartments or tenants, many of these people have lived in their communities in their home for 20 years. And I think I should note right now, first of all, that Advisory Neighborhood Commission 4B has already sent you detailed resolutions about this project, and they will be submitted again for the record. I am speaking at this point for myself because some of the comments I'm making are not part of ANC 4B's recommendations, but ANC 4B's recommendations stand, and I support them. One of the things that I think is really angering to me about this, in addition to the fact that this is a very large project, it's way too big, it does not conform in so many ways to the Tacoma Central District Plan, which is the master plan that I helped develop along with about 100 other people in very hot and gloomy, in a very hot room over about a year. We developed this plan, and WAMADA is ignoring it. But one of the other things that I think people are not aware of about this proposal is the impact on affordable housing. I think there's a huge irony here, that a lot of people who do support this project will say, "Well, more density, more affordable housing, city needs affordable housing, that's important." Well, we have affordable housing on Eastern Avenue. We have about 100 units of it right now. And if you build this project the way you're proposing to build it, you're going to go very high, you're going to shed out their lighting air, you're going to lull over, it's a 72-foot building, you're going to lull over a three-story brick apartment building, you're going to run a driveway, you're going to run all these cars past windows, very close to somebody's window and front door. Now they have a buffer park, they won't. So you're going to degrade the quality of life for the 100 units of affordable housing already on Eastern Avenue. For what? To put a handful, maybe, of affordable units into a building that is going to have a lot of small studios? You know, I mean, this is not honest, it's not a community-spirited proposal. What people are asking for is something that fits this neighborhood, that respects the Tacoma Historic District, both in DC and in Maryland, that will operate like a neighbor. And one other last thing, I was just particularly offended by the letter that EYA sent. I mean, they have got a bunch of money, so they can send out a bunch of letters, and they did. And it was a very cleverly, carefully-written letter, and I just want to read one quote from it. And what Mr. Master said was, "WAMADA recently voted unanimously to approve a contract with EYA to develop their property. This process will take a number of years to complete, and we are at the beginning stages, very beginning stages. We are currently finalizing the details of our agreement with WAMADA and look forward to beginning the detailed design process in the coming months." I really hope he was misstating that, because it really sounds, if EYA is finalizing an agreement with WAMADA, it leads me to ask, why are we here? You should not be finalizing anything with EYA until you listen to testimony, until, I mean, at least listen to the testimony, I mean, really, at least listen to the testimony, before allowing anybody to finalize anything. And that's just offensive to me. EYA didn't mention this hearing or anything else. So I ask you for basic fairness, both in the way you are running this hearing and listening to us, and in a way, eventually, you will design a building that I hope a lot of people in this community will support. Thank you again for listening, and I continue to have faith in government despite some of these issues. Thanks again.
Thank you. Commissioner Faith Wheeler.
The microphone's right there next to you. Okay, is that better? Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for holding this compact hearing, which I understand is required in any case by you. My name is Faith Wheeler, and I am staunchly proud of development. I first came to DC in 1962. I have lived in Tacoma DC since 1978. One of the several reasons that I moved here was to do my part in helping this community improve. I have worked on this project since 2001 and have been ANC Commissioner since 2003. I am, however, speaking for myself, as Commissioner Green did, and in any case supportive of the ANC resolution. Also, I'd like to say, I happen to have a personal stake in climate role. What does development actually mean? Looking at the word development, we see phrases such as viability, standard of living, economic health, quality of life, consideration of community-wide or regional environmental implications. In my 30 years of evaluating programs for the Board of Directors of the Inter-American Development Bank and training international staff and project teams for the International Inter-American Development Bank, I learned that promoting development is far more than bricks and mortar, even if placed next to a transit station. Some folks would have you believe that that's enough. The basic principle is, how would a development project actually affect the community? How would it affect people? What would be the lasting implications and impact, economically, financially, environmentally, regarding transportation, socially? And in all that, what's the entire picture? What's the whole picture in the near and the distant future? This particular project could be an outstanding model of sustainability and diversity, while forcing a strong sense of community and sense of place, others that are sorely needed in this society in this day and age. Instead, we have interests taking over that transgress those critical values. And here, I'm going to be a bit sarcastic, because it makes me angry. Terry Aiken and Bob Youngthob of NIAA still say this is a good opportunity to make some money. Though, for Jack Lester, hope that no one notices their current proposal soars 30 feet above the DC zoning limits next to Eastern Avenue and 20 feet above DC zoning limits in the zone a few feet back. Not one of the other three multifamily units built in recent years, or the three more approved, are above the DC zoning height limit of 50 and 55 for Tacoma Central, which is in the Tacoma Overlay Zone. Terry Aiken and Bob Youngthob are apparently not bothered that their proposal would take away a lovely wooded grove enjoyed by residents in the three-story modest apartment building next door, and lay in its place three access egress lanes to EYA's parking garage. Affordable housing be damned. Those people should just go out and get a good job, right? And the single-family homes across the street, who cares about them? After all, they're in Maryland, right? Just suck it up. Tacoma Park Historic District, what's that? Who cares? That's so yesterday. And to save the planet, we've got to pack in as many people as possible right next to the metro station. The more, the better. Bring them on. Taking off my sarcastic hat, the fact is, we already have some 650 relatively new units built or proved to be built within two to three blocks of the metro station. That does not include Woodya Gardens and Butterlet Court, both in my single-member district, beautifully renovated in the past few years in a way that truly enhances our community. Tacoma is a special place with a unique history of pioneering public transit, true diversity, and healthy green living. This is what we need to celebrate and enhance with something that exemplifies Tacoma, a building that looks something like this, drawn in 2006. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now take non-elected officials. And what I'm going to do is I'm going to read a name and then a second person who will be the person right after the first name I read. Joseph, and I apologize for the name, Joseph Radzovich, to be followed by Sabrina Eaton.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Radzavich. I'm a proud resident of 7050 Eastern Avenue, the Elm Garden Apartments, and I rise tonight in strong opposition to the current WAMADA-EYA proposal. And I want to share with you this sign that my neighbors and I have put together a collective cross-border effort of Tacoma Park, Maryland and Tacoma DC. It reads "right-sized, not supersized development," and that really sums up the way we feel about this proposal. I'll note that the ANC Advisory Neighborhood Commission and Tacoma Park, Maryland passed resolutions regarding this development, and since those resolutions have been passed, not a single change, to my knowledge, has been made. What does that say about this process? There are issues with this process in terms of the height of the building, as tall as 70 feet, not within the zoning regulations. The overall density is so large, the footprint of the building takes up not just the existing parking garage, or excuse me, parking lot, but it destroys the green space buffer area next to the Garden Apartments, of which I am a resident, and my fellow residents are very concerned. There are issues with traffic. Already, we have seen that the traffic study from WAMADA is flawed. There's also issues with compatibility with pedestrian and disabled access. This is a historic district. What about the character of the neighborhood? We recommend a Neighborhood Design Working Group, and not a work group that's stocked full of development-friendly people who have connections to the development industry, but people who have a connection to this neighborhood, this immediately adjacent neighborhood. Further, I recommend that we not approve any joint development agreement unless it is fully compliant with the zoning regulations, including a Tacoma Central District Plan, which requires a 50-foot buffer. And lastly, I'll just end on this, I think that clock is wrong. I don't think you want to give me another 2 minutes and 40 minutes to speak, but this is a very special place. We live in a country, the United States of America, where I can get up in front of an audience like this, and tomorrow, I will wake up in the morning. In another country, that may not happen. There are a lot of people over the years who have fought in this very neighborhood, the only Civil War battle fought in this area, was fought right here in this neighborhood, to preserve the right, what I'm doing now, to preserve the right to have development that is sensitive and compatible to all of the community, not just those who are wealthy and well-connected. Back in the '50s and '60s, we had a group called Neighbors Incorporated. We had great community activists like Sam Abbott from Tacoma Park, who prevented this neighborhood from being destroyed by a highway. We stood up to the powerful in the Civil War, we stood up to the powerful in the '50s and '60s, and my friends, today, 2014, we will stand up to injustice today. We will ensure that the community will be heard and that the development is compatible with the community, compatible with real transit, compatible with the interests of this community, and sensitive to all members of the community, not just those with deep pockets. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina Eaton, to be followed by Jeffrey Silverstone.
Hi, thanks for coming out here today to hear our testimony. I'm Sabrina Eaton, and I live directly across Eastern Avenue from the metro parking lot this proposal would occupy. I've lived there for 20 years. While this design is an improvement over the two-car garage townhouses that EYA previously wanted to build on the property, the present incarnation is still too large for the site and would tower over adjacent apartment buildings and single-family homes such as my own. Their last plan was horizontal sprawl, this is vertical sprawl. The area zoning caps the height of buildings on that site at 50 feet, yet EYA's plan would be 72 feet tall, roughly 20 feet higher than any other apartment building in the metro station area. The Tacoma Central District Plan calls for a landscape buffer of 50 feet around the existing apartment buildings and condominiums on Eastern Avenue, yet EYA's plan shows no buffer whatsoever to protect surrounding properties. EYA's proposal also doesn't meet the Tacoma Central District Plan requirement. The development on the site mesh with the existing community to preserve and enhance Tacoma's small-town village character. Its current supersized plan undercuts the historic small-town vibe that draws people to this area. It should be scaled back to fit in with the rest of the neighborhood. Overgrowth is not the same thing as smart growth. The only parties for whom this development is smart are EYA, which wants a supersized building to get supersized profits, and entities funded by EYA, like the so-called Coalition for Smarter Growth, whose leaders have endorsed every EYA plan for this site, including those that the developer and WAMADA subsequently rejected. That group is clearly a cheerleader for its corporate donors, and its input should be viewed with great suspicion. Misleading sales pitches for this project by EYA and its cheerleaders are another concern. They say it will provide a 90-car garage for metro patrons without mentioning the 60-space loss of public parking that entails. They describe the current parking as underhitalized without mentioning that the bizarre hours WAMADA has imposed on the lot are what curtail its use. They describe the building as three to four stories tall without mentioning that it will really be six or seven stories tall because it sits on top of parking. They say they'll work with residents on its design, when all they've done so far is host sales parties where they seek endorsement letters from people whose lunch they just bought. If they really intend to partner with residents on the design, as they claimed in their letter that they sent out, they should actually do it and stop dishing out baloney. The developers of the under-construction Tacoma Commons Building also underplay the actual size of the structure to the neighborhood's subsequent dismay. We won't be fooled again. This project is way bigger than that one and would be way more destructive to our neighborhood. Please send it back to the drawing board. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Jeffrey Silverstone, to be followed by Peter Kovar.
I'm Jeffrey Silverstone. I represent Seager's Church, a DC church located across Carroll Street from the Tacoma Station. We walk, bike, drive, and take the subway to church. Last year, we also hosted over 600 events throughout the week. We consider the station site to be a gateway between DC and Maryland and the center of an integrated Tacoma community. Like us, WAMADA recognizes the importance of biking. The notice for this meeting cites the improvement of pedestrian-bicycle access to the station. The Tacoma Station Technical Memorandum of 2013 notes that Tacoma had the second-highest level of bike parking in the metro system, and this was before the recently-installed and heavily-used ride-on station, as well as the planned bike station for 105 bikes to be installed this year. While all this bike parking is good, the EYA plan development does nothing to improve bicycle access to the station. The circulation plan's analysis, which is Exhibit 4 of the handout for this meeting, omits bicycles. This is because the proposed building, by providing a narrow sidewalk along Eastern and a narrow path through the garage, blocks bikes from accessing the station from the north. We believe that the building must provide a zoning-compliant setback from Eastern in order to allow bicycle access. The Metropolitan Branch Trail is an eight-mile trail that runs from Union Station to Silver Spring. It connects to the Tacoma Station along the east using an on-street alignment along Cedar and Eastern Avenue. Moreover, the MBT is being designed to also run on the west side of the rail tracks. The proposed building blocks the eastern alignment. While the EYA plan from 2007 provided an 11-foot shared-use path, 5-foot buffer, and a 24-foot travel lanes to support the alignment, this 2014 EYA plan does none of this. Furthermore, while the western alignment runs just a few feet from the bicycle entrance to the station, this plan does nothing to allow western access to the entrance. Even with a jog around the elevator room to save the cost of moving the machine room, this plan passes on an opportunity to finance opening up the bicycle entrance to the trail, as is called for in the DC Central District Plan. Furthermore, a through tunnel would provide handicapped access to new residential development on the western side of the tracks, such as the 150 units planned for spring place. The Tacoma Station should promote bicycle traffic, not block it. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Kovar, to be followed by Loretta Newman.
My name is Peter Kovar. I've lived in Tacoma Park for Maryland for about 22 years, about five houses from the development site. I'm a member of DC Maryland Neighbors for Tacoma Transit. We can create an attractive transit-oriented building at the metro site if there is serious engagement by EYA. That hasn't happened. I know of just one public EYA meeting for Maryland residents held last year. The current proposal is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood, in part because there has been so little consultation. I join my neighbors in asking the board to insist on the creation of a formal process for community engagement. for community engagement. Without that, although the project's impact falls heavily on Maryland residents, because the site is solely in Washington, DC, Marylanders will have little influence on design and structural details. Those will be decided mainly in the DC zoning process. Thus, this hearing could be the last chance for Marylanders to communicate with a body obliged to consider our views. Like many of my neighbors, I have concerns about the size of the building, cuts in public parking, loss of green space, access to the station, setback from the street, and impact on traffic. A genuine give-and-take with the community would help us reach consensus on those points and produce a win-win-win project, one that enhances transit, creates more housing, and is compatible. Last week, EYA sent a letter stating, "We're in the very beginning stages, and then we're currently finalizing the details." It's discouraging to hear that EYA is both in the beginning stages and finalizing the details. They apparently want Womata approval before key community concerns are resolved. But Womata can help ensure there is real community involvement and avoid protracted legal and political challenges. EYA's latest letter says they plan community meetings to hear our thoughts on design, landscaping, and architecture. But without a formal structure for that community input, the outreach will be just PR. Therefore, I agree with those who express support for creating a neighborhood design working group. EYA says the development process will take years, so a few months of work by a committee of residents, business owners, transit users, and other stakeholders will not cause significant delay. I urge EYA to support the establishment of the neighborhood design working group. With everything on the table, and here's the board to vote on the report for today's hearing, only when there is a commitment to establish that group. This recommendation doesn't exceed the board's mission. The hearing announcement states the board is required to consider, among other things, land use, population, environmental amenities, aesthetics, and the beauty and dignity of the nation's capital city. Now is the time for the board to recognize the unique cross-border nature of this proposal and strike a blow for community engagement rather than rubber-stamping a development plan. In closing, I note that the name of the proposed development is Tacoma Connected. Moving forward on Tacoma Connected, without including the Maryland side of that connection, would render the name meaningless. Thanks.
Thank you. Loretta Newman, to be followed by Sarah Hayden.
Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I do hope that the purpose of this hearing is to hear from the community and to take into account what we're saying and maybe make some changes as you go forward. Otherwise, you know, you're wasting everybody's time, and I think that's been pointed out before. I live in a home just three, I live at Piney Branch and Blair Road. I'm just three blocks from the Tacoma Metro Station. I've been involved, my husband has lived here for 15 years, I've lived here for almost 40. So we know this area. We've been here before, we testified before at the previous ones, and actually, it was a decade ago when this all started. We're not opposed to the development, nor are we supporting the development. We really do seek some constructive changes, and here are our suggestions for improvements. First of all, the green space. There are two green spaces actually on it, and I looked at, I've looked at all the maps, I've looked at all, everything that Womata put up, which is pretty, there's not a lot on the website, but what's there, I've looked at. And there are two green spaces, way near the corner of Cedar and Carroll, and I'm glad to see that that shows it being preserved, is open space. But in the text of the proposal, or what's written, there's no, nothing that says for sure that that's going to be permanent. So we want things in writing. We've learned in the past with Womata, if it doesn't, if we don't have it in writing, we can't count on it when years go by. Second of all, the buffer, as has been pointed out before, between the parking lot and the apartments and the houses, of course, on Eastern Avenue, that needs to be preserved, and we are very saddened to see that road. And actually, it wasn't until tonight I realized that not only is that strip coming in for the driveway where trucks and such will access, but there's a whole piece that runs into the rest of that buffer area. At any rate, we urge you to save the buffer area and find another way to access into the area. The size and scale has been pointed out, is just, it looms over, it dwarfs anything that's ever been built in Tacoma, DC. That really, it's not that it can't be big, but this is too big. 70-some feet is higher than anything we have in our community, and this is in the heart of our historic district. So we ask you to please, that could be lowered, and if it means that you, that Womata gets a little less money from the developer, then the developer will make the same amount of money that they would make anyway, because they're just making a few fewer units. So we urge you to look, we can figure that. Multifamily units, you even talk about multifamily, but there's nothing in the written statement about how many units are going to have two bedrooms. You have to have, you're going to have families in an apartment, you've got to have at least two bedrooms, and there's nothing in there to say that. And lastly, I live on Piney Branch Road, and I was shocked just this afternoon, when I'd already written this, and then I discovered in your traffic analysis, this proposal to eliminate curb-side parking on northbound Piney Branch Road between Dahlia Street and Eastern Avenue. If you all know where that is, Dahlia, and that's where Trinity Church is, and then it goes in front of my house, and please let me finish, because it's not fair to the church, it's not fair to us, even to propose it. But also, you have no jurisdiction over parking on our streets. That's a city decision.
I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Yes, well, thank you.
Sarah Hayden, to be followed by Christine Simpson.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Sarah Hayden. I live in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I have a couple of, hello? Okay. I'm Sarah Hayden. I live in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I have two main points. One, Board of Directors of Womata, do your job. You have an independent responsibility here to evaluate the project in its entirety, and this is a responsibility that includes evaluation of the design and impact, not just on parking, which hasn't been fully analyzed under your traffic study, parking and traffic, but also, as other people have mentioned, in your compact, you have the responsibility to consider data with respect to current and prospective conditions in the transit zone. That includes Maryland, as well as the District of Columbia, and with, including without limitation, land use, population, and preservation of the beauty and dignity of the nation's capital. You need to look at the design, and you need to independently approve the design before you pass it on to DC. This is not a responsibility that you can abdicate or delegate to DC. So I urge you to stop, don't approve any joint development agreement, but fully vet this design independent of DC. And also, you need to comply with federal law, which includes but is not limited to Section 106 review under the National Historic Preservation Act. And in these discussions and the propaganda from EYA and information from Womata, I find it unfortunately absent from it the fact that this is in a national and local historic district, as well as it butts in other national and local historic districts in Maryland. And obviously, the community members keep on reminding you, but I see that as a huge fatal omission and the public information provided on this project. And I want to assure you that the community will take any and all necessary steps to ensure that Womata complies with all laws and fulfills its responsibilities. Two, I'm addressing this to Womata and EYA, stop wasting our time. Come up with a project that at least complies with current DC zoning. You are on the cusp of approving a design that doesn't comply with DC zoning and that's hopeful that the DC Zoning Commission will approve this. Well, as many may be aware, EYA and its other partners and a joint venture have not fared very well in front of the zoning commission with respect to the McMillan Reservoir Project. They were shot down. So it's a waste of time for you to approve a project that may not be even approved by DC, even if you could delegate that authority to review the design to DC, which you can't. So stop wasting our time. Do a project that is thoughtful to the community. You've provided two designs that are fatally flawed. Work hard on a design that everyone can get behind and support, so we can get this thing built. Secondly, and this is to EYA, stop with the fluff propaganda. You're speaking to, you're promising a vibrant community. We are a vibrant community. We are a transit-oriented development community. So stop with that.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Christine Simpson, to be followed by James DiLuigi.
My name is Christine Simpson. I live on Cedar Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I live on Cedar Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland, about two blocks from the Tacoma Metro Station. I support sensible development at the station, but I do oppose the current redevelopment plan because it is too big and does not fit in well with the surrounding neighborhood. I'm asking you, Womata, to require the developer, EYA, to engage in real public dialogue with our community before you move this project along. Here are my reasons. EYA has not communicated in any meaningful way with those of us who live near the development. It has only held one public meeting in August 2013. Although it claims to have held other public meetings, in fact, those meetings were by invitation only to certain select individuals. There's also a lot of confusion about the plan. The materials that are publicly available are inadequate and raise more questions than the answer. For example, the drawings that are included in the docket are too tiny or blurry to be legible even with magnification. The docket includes no massing studies. Those are the drawings that depict the building in three dimensions. We need massing studies that include the adjacent apartment buildings so that we can see how well the proposed structure fits with its surroundings. There have been massing studies in the past. Why not now? Is it because they so clearly reveal the massive size of the proposed building? Likewise, there are no floor plans. The floor plans give the best idea of how the ground floor would relate to Eastern Avenue. People who have been following this issue closely disagree on how far the building is proposed to be set back from the Eastern Avenue curb. Is it now only 13 feet? Was it 23 feet before? And where are the loading docks? Are these still located on Eastern? Is it really an improvement if they've been moved to the public access road? Pedestrians and cars, when they enter the station, will still have to cross in front of these loading docks. Such a path endangers pedestrians and is ripe for traffic backups. These are details, but they are important details, and they are unclear in the information currently available. The Tacoma Metro Station is unique. It is located on a jurisdictional boundary line adjacent to a historic residential community. While I have heard that Womata typically expects issues of design to be worked out by local zoning boards, in this case, the local board is the DC Zoning Commission, and Marylanders will have no guaranteed right to participate. There is plenty of authority for you, Womata, to require the developer to engage in real design dialogue. The public notice for this very hearing states, as others have said, that the Womata compact requires the board, when it is amending the mass transit plan, which it would be doing by approving this redevelopment, to consider, to consider conditions in the transit zone, which includes the District and Montgomery County, Maryland. And the list of conditions that the board is required to consider includes factors affecting aesthetics and preservation of the beauty and dignity of the nation's capital. Requiring EYA to work with the community on design concerns would be a way for Womata to meet this obligation under the compact.
Thank you very much.
I urge you to delay your vote.
Thank you.
On the staff report that will follow the compact hearing, until EYA in fact engages in real conversation with the community about design issues. Thank you very much.
James DiLuigi, and, to be followed by Antonio Estrada.
My name is James DiLuigi. My wife and I have lived in the same address in Tacoma Park for more than 40 years. I have voluntarily served my community in various capacities over these years. Currently, I'm Vice President of Historic Tacoma, an organization with memberships addressing historic aspects of Tacoma in both DC and Maryland. I'm an architect with sufficient expertise in both residential and commercial development. I'm also a nationally-recognized expert on accessibility regulations, including the Americans with Disabilities Act and various state and city accessibility regulations. I'm here to ask and encourage that Womata Board do its rightful duty by rejecting this development proposal and to instead direct the developer to work effectively with local community to create an acceptable proposal that is sensitive to the neighborhood which it will inhabit. The basis for which Womata should do so is as follows. One, Section 1 of the Womata Joint Development Policies and Guidelines identifies 10 objectives for developers to enter, who enter into a development agreement with Womata. This proposed development plan fails to meet a number of those objectives, not the least of which are relative to safe pedestrian bicycle access. It is my understanding that the Womata Board may have indicated a disinterest in the design aspects of this proposal. If so, such a position would be clearly disingenuous considering both the development objectives adopted by Womata and the fact that Womata's staff has actively participated in defending certain aspects of the design during past public hearings. The gentleman on the right is, or on your left, is one of those persons. Two, the proposed design grossly exceeds currently applicable zoning regulations. The primary purpose of such regulations is to protect neighborhoods from the negative impacts of inappropriate developments. This is accomplished by various methods, one of which is properly allocating densities by means of height restrictions and building setback lines, both of which would be violated by the proposed development. In addition, the proposed design, as has been presented by the developer in various iterations, is incompatible with the existing historical neighborhood in terms of scale, massing, and materials, as well as not being compatible with vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian Third, the proposed design is not representative of a healthy environment. Virtually all of the living units look across narrow courtyards and other, other trafficked broadways, which are very close proximity to the building. Since I only have a few seconds left, I would just add, I urge that Womata not approve this project at this time, but rather have the developer work with the local community interest groups and neighborhoods to the property to create a design that is reasonably acceptable and supportable. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Antonio Estrada, to be followed by Ruth Foster.
Yeah, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Antonio Estrada. I'm a Tacoma Park resident. I'm an MBA in Finance, Mechanical Engineering, and recently an executive and life coach. My motivation to talk here today is that we all have an opportunity to make a difference here, because we are all in this together. It's June 2014, and it's been 52 years since Silent Spring, Richard Carson's book that started the environmental movement, was released. It's been already eight years after the movie Inconvenient Truth was in the movie theaters. So in all ways, we all have, we all have great awareness about the unsuspected adverse consequences that wrong-size developments, as the one proposed, can cause. I want to emphasize here four reasons that, why all the parties involved in this project want to make a difference. The first one, we have the opportunity to develop a right-sized development that becomes a smooth transition between Tacoma, DC and Tacoma Park, Maryland. This means that no section of the development should exceed the height of the existing neighboring buildings. Now, the proposed plan requires to go as high as 72 feet. That's 80% above the actual neighboring buildings. Also, the proposed number of units is now, just six years after 2008, 235% larger. These numbers are not aligned with right-sized development. The second opportunity we have is to enhance green spaces. As of now, the project calls for the elimination of part of the 50-foot landscape buffer. So what is planned is really a reduction of the green areas instead of the proposed, the set enhancement. Again, we are confident that this project will be revised and conform to what we want to have. The third opportunity we have is to expand the parking area to cover the growing needs, not only of the current residents, but also the increased needs that the area will experience with the new residents. In this regard, it doesn't make sense that as a result of the proposed project, parking spaces will be reduced by 40%, and we all want residents to park and ride. This is not incentivizing, motivating that. And finally, I think the fourth reason that we can take advantage of this opportunity is that because we all want that the developer, and also Womata, are awarded for this project. You know, we can really make a difference in the community, and we can give, set a landmark that can be an example for the future developments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ruth Foster, to be followed by Elise Ambrose.
I was included in the development of the Tacoma Metro Station, so I'm very familiar with what happened in the beginning. I also know that Womata can't be trusted to keep its word, because it did not do a lot of things that they said that they were going to do. My problem is with the traffic study that EYA did. I want to know why you didn't use the statistics that the DC government did on the traffic study in this area. You could have used them, and if you didn't agree with them, you would have had a chance to refute what they said, but you chose not to do that. Piney Branch and Eastern, that's always been a failing intersection, and even with the light there, it has not helped a great deal. And there's no way to widen that, to make things any- And there's no way to widen that to make things any better. Blower Road, Fourth Street, that area in Carroll, all of that area, they studied that before. Blower Road is a secondary road, and Fourth Street, the buses use, and the parking for the businesses on that street. There's no way to change the configuration of that. There's nothing you can do about it. You have to live with it. And you should take into consideration the development in the area. You know, for instance, well-terrain reuse, which estimates 2,197 vehicle trips during peak hours. Tacoma Central, 235 to 255 Carroll Street, the proposed development of a brownstone to 160 rental apartments, approximately 8,300 square feet of on-street retail located near the Tacoma Red Line Metro Station. Tacoma Park, 6924 Willow Street. And it goes on. There's about eight other things that you had not considered. Another thing that I want to say is that you also have to consider the violence, mental, especially the air quality control. I live on Piney Branch, and when they had the traffic going south on AM and north on PM, I have a side porch, and we couldn't sit out there at all because the air was so bad you couldn't breathe it. You'd start choking and coughing, and your eyes would start running. So what makes you think that when you put all this traffic in this area, it is not going to affect the air quality in this area? All of that needs to be taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Elise Ambrose, to be followed by John Recktenwald.
Hi, I'm Elise Ambrose. I'm pretty sure there won't be any applause when I'm finished because I'm actually for the development. I think the development, this is the most recent picture I've seen. I think it's interesting that everybody has opinions as to what EYA has done wrong when the design actually hasn't been finished, has hardly been started. I have been to a few meetings with EYA. They didn't buy me lunch, but I don't know why. I'm not, wouldn't be bought quite that cheaply in any case. But I understand that they have fixed some of the problems with the setback from Eastern Avenue, and the 72 feet that everyone keeps talking about is actually up against the metro. It is, you know, well set back from anything anybody's going to see at street level or even from a second story of their house across the street. So my understanding is that 16 years is what EYA has been involved with this project for. That's absurd. Tacoma Park, that development should have gone three years ago, although granted, they weren't right about the townhouses. They were, I think that was a silly development. There's 200, I think around 200 units. If anything, I think it's not dense enough for a major transit hub that costs a huge amount of money to maintain. I didn't laugh at you. I'd appreciate if you'd give me the same respect. So at any rate, I'd like to say that I think it's a great development. I think there will be a lot of changes in the design as goes forward. I'm sure the neighborhood, I'm sure EYA will hopefully hold a lot of meetings and dispel some of the rumors that are wandering around continuously here. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. John Recktenwald, to be followed by Valerie Tennant.
Hello, I'm John Recktenwald. I'm a registered architect. I've been involved with urban planning, site planning professionally, and involved in all those transit stations.
Could you hold it a little closer? Thank you.
I'm sorry. You know, I'm a registered architect. I've been involved with urban mass transit and site planning, city planning, as well as architecture. And I can say that, in my experience, that this site could hold a lot more development rather than less. The, you know, community through input has decided that a lot of the site should be set aside for public use, which is admirable, and I think it reflects well upon metro. I think that also that WAMADA...
It's not a question for your mouth.
Oh, sorry. I think that WAMADA is very well aware of what its responsibilities are and the process that we're undertaking here. I think this is part of a continuing effort on WAMADA's part to be able to develop their site, which they have every right to do. And I also think that it's very reflective upon the community that there is all the input, and it's been going on for many years, far more than my experience would ever suggest could take place. It's kind of Guinness Book of World Records kind of thing, in my experience. But, you know, as far as accessibility, circulation, interim parking, you know, those things obviously are part of this and the reason of this particular hearing. And once that is set, my understanding is that it will allow the architect then to look at what the floor elevations are, the configuration of the first floor, you know, as well as the configuration of the building. So once those things are settled, then I think the time comes to look at whether this is what people like or they don't like, because what you'll have, what I'm understanding the process will give, is the final definition of what now is the base that you can build a building on. So this has to happen first. It seems to me though the community will be well-served and as it intends to be. But when you get all said and done, I think it's an excellent, you know, process. I think the process that will provide for some real economic base, you know, it's going to be positive for Tacoma Park. I think that it'll be something everybody can be proud of, and the process should go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Tennant, to be followed by Bill Wald.
Hi, I'm a commercial property owner directly across from the metro station that's currently being leased by 7-Eleven. And there's a huge development going in right behind 7-Eleven, which is within the zoning requirements and completely dwarfs the 7-Eleven property and the home that's right next door. It's cut off the light to the homeowner's property, even cutting down some of his trunks. And it does impact the people in the area. They really don't need to go above the zoning height for it to already, it's already dwarfing the neighborhood. One of my big pet peeves is the loading dock that's planned on Eastern Avenue where trucks would have to stop on Eastern Avenue, back up over the sidewalk. There's pedestrians going by, bicyclists. How are they going to even see if a bicycle is coming? It's just not safe. And there needs to be that buffer between the apartments and this huge building. They don't need a driveway taking out the green space buffer. It needs to be redesigned so that the green space stays by the apartments and that the loading dock is not a danger. The Tacoma Central District Plan calls to improve pedestrian environment and quality of streetscape, especially to and from the metro, and make major pedestrian corridors pedestrian-friendly. So their plan really needs to follow that kind of design. EYA's traffic study, I don't believe incorporates the massive development that's already in progress right across the street, and then several more that are planned already. So that if they think that, you know, oh, well, female cars aren't going to have an impact, I disagree. I don't think their traffic study is accurate. And I do believe that EYA should be required to work with the suggested neighborhood group and come up with a plan that would fit better and be safe for the community.
Thank you. Bill Wald, to be finished, to be followed by Linda Gray.
Actually, my name's Rob Nordheimer, filling in for my partner, Bill Walde, if that's okay. I checked in upfront, and they had made that change, so.
Okay. If they let you do that at registration, then?
They did. Great. Good evening. My name is Rob Nordheimer, and I'm principal with the company that owns 7036 Eastern Avenue, which is the apartment building located next to the proposed EYA development. The development plan for Tacoma Park Metro raises several concerns for our residents, other apartment building residents, as well as our neighbors. A few of our concerns. The adjoining park that provides an open green space environment for the community located between our building and the metro property was dedicated space in the comprehensive metro plan. So it's been approved, dedicated space prior to the metro development. The park setting is used on a daily basis by many Tacoma Park residents. The majority of our residents who've been in the building for over 20 years, and residents in other buildings near us, have enjoyed picnics and outdoor recreation since the property was dedicated. The proposed plan calls for the median vehicle traffic to be right next to 7036 Eastern Avenue, which will take away from the park, the green space environment, and it just really needs to be thought out a bit differently. We believe that actually the main entrance to the property, the new development, should be on the other side going south. The park setting serves as a natural setting for birds, wildlife, and the community already lacks this type of open space. We do request that EYA leave this space intact. It's a 50-foot buffer. It's actually part of the Tacoma Park Central District. It states that a 50-foot buffer must always separate our building from the metro property. I don't know if you'll have actually reviewed that, but I have a feeling there's certain people in my building, and in the buildings next to the building that I own, that are going to be pretty direct, and that they're not going to let that buffer go away. I certainly won't. The height and scale of the proposed apartment building as it approaches Eastern Avenue is a major concern. The building's scale is out of place. It will negatively affect our residents, our neighbors, and others. The proposed mass will greatly affect air and sunlight. It is our opinion the building height should mirror 7036 Eastern Avenue and gradually step back higher going towards the metro station. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Gray, to be followed by Nick Casey.
Good evening. My name is Linda Gray, and I represent the Eastmont Cooperative, 7054 to 7060 Eastern Avenue. I'm sorry I don't have written testimony. I don't need written testimony. Testimony was written fully and signed by Jack Lester in a letter dated May 27. The fact that we received this letter has confirmed to us that WAMADA and EYA have no intentions of acting in good faith with the affected community. This letter that was sent to the community, including us, states that the new development will turn the underutilized parking lot into a vibrant residential community. The parking lot is not underutilized. Secondly, it says that your input during the design phase is most important to us, and we will be reaching out to the community throughout. There has been absolutely no input from the affected community, although we've asked time and time again to meet with you. Mr. Wall, you and I shook hands on that at the ANC meeting. To this day, we've had no meeting. It further states that all of EYA's neighborhoods blend with surrounding communities and respect their unique characteristics, but we don't know that because you refuse to talk to us. And if it looks like some of the other developments at other metro stations, then we already disagree. As we move ahead, we will continue to reach out to the residents. We're still waiting for the first meeting. And so because of this letter being sent to us, which made absolutely no sense to us, we don't believe that you have any intentions of acting in good faith. So what we are suggesting is that you simply stop using these get-over tactics to get what you want done and to fully engage the community so that you have a product that you can be proud of and one that we can live with. That's true community engagement, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick Casey, to be followed by Leonard Rubin.
Hi, my name is Nick Casey, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak today. I live in Tacoma, D.C., and I support this proposal. It will remove an unnecessary parking lot and replace it with badly needed housing. The housing stock in Tacoma is mostly detached, single-family houses. This gives the neighborhood a quaint charm, but the lack of density makes the downtown a little sleepy. I wish Tacoma was more vibrant. That is a common complaint that I hear from people my age who moved to Tacoma after having been priced out of more central neighborhoods. This development will bring more residents into the neighborhood, who will help support local businesses and attract new ones. Some people are saying that this building is too tall. Of course, there are people who say that about any proposed development. There are already many tall buildings in the neighborhood, including a 10-story building two blocks away in Maryland. Those have not destroyed the character of the neighborhood, and neither will this building. Any questions about zoning will be addressed by the D.C. Zoning Commission. We don't have all the rights that Maryland residents have in D.C. However, I'd like to hang on to the ones that we do have. The only complaint that I might have about this project is that I think it includes too much parking. It has .7 spaces per unit, but only 62 percent of D.C. households own a car. I'm sure those numbers are even lower for apartments that are right next to a metro station. I used to live in the Cedar Crossing Building, which is right around the corner. I always found it easy to park on the street, which is free, so I'm not sure anyone would pay hundreds of dollars a month to park in a garage. I excited to see this project move forward. I hope construction begins as soon as possible, and I look forward to welcoming our new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Leonard Rubin, to be followed by Thomas Fedewa. I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
Well, I've lived, my family and I, on Blair Road since 1965. When EYA and WAMADA first came out in the newspaper, in The Post, that they were going to build on the metro site, a group of us got together, including many who have testified here tonight, and wanted to get involved. We didn't like a lot of what was going on. And to cut a long story short, three years later, everything seemed to sort of come to a standstill. But the plan offered by WAMADA and not rejected by EYA and not rejected by WAMADA remained essentially the same. From a point of view of smart growth and environment and respect for the community, it was irresponsible. Now, everything got quiet. Last July, there was a meeting at the Fourth Precinct Police Station, and, gosh, things looked better. They weren't going to build on the green space. They were going to build this. Well, there were some comments about that, but suddenly, I see the height of this new thing. No reference at that time was made to how high this construction would be and how dominant. There's a great deal of density going on now. There's two on Blower Road, two apartment complexes, another across from WAMADA. Two are being built on Carroll. And a road next to it will be built behind the CVS on Grand owned by Douglas Jamal, I It seems to me that the whole problem here is that EYA has not been trustworthy, and WAMADA has not represented itself as a public organization. It has a responsibility to the community which it has not fulfilled so far. We had our hearings back when this first came out, to no avail. And I hope that with this hearing, and with what I've heard and agree with, that a process is set up so that input from the community is available before it... is set up so that input from the community is available before EYA comes up with its great ideas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thomas Fedewa to be followed by Elliot Queen. Mr. Fedewa? All right. Elliot Queen to be followed by Cheryl Court. Elliot Queen? All right. Cheryl Court to be followed by Jessie Thomas.
Thanks for the opportunity to testify. My name is Cheryl Court. I'm the Policy Director for the Coalition for Smarter Growth. We are the leading organization in Washington DC region dedicated to making the case for smart growth. Our mission is to promote walkable, inclusive, and transit-oriented communities and the land use and transportation policies and investments needed to make those communities flourish. We're here to express our support for moving this proposal forward and ask the WAMADA to approve the proposed changes to WAMADA facilities at the Tacoma Metro Station and to advance this joint development agreement. We have followed this issue closely since 2000, and I'm gratified to see that we've come to such a good compromise addressing all the key issues raised by the previous proposal. We support the proposed facility changes and joint development with EYA to construct at least 200 units in a mid-rise apartment building. The new proposal addresses all the key concerns raised by opponents of the previous plan. Most significantly, the plan preserves the large open space in front of the station, something that many people thought was important. The plan will add bus capacity and retain the bus loop and future potential expansion for bus transit facilities, which were also issues raised in the past. The proposal will enhance pedestrian walkways, reduce, replace underutilized metro parking, and offer a lower parking ratio for new residents, and bring the drop-off and disabled parking closer to the elevator entrance. We're also excited to see the bike station open shortly. While addressing all the key objections and concerns raised by the original proposal, the new plan offers more than double the housing opportunities that the townhouse proposal did, and this means that more than twice the number of households will have the opportunity to live in more sustainable, low-carbon, transit-oriented lives. We do want to raise the issue related to affordable housing. Originally, the DC Council had adopted in its resolution of the Tacoma Central District Plan, set aside of twenty percent affordable housing units, and we have attached to our testimony the report from the 2002 resolution by the city. We ask that WAMADA honor that and go beyond the standard law for any private development, which would just be an inclusionary zoning obligation of eight to ten units of moderately-priced housing. We urge, in conclusion, we urge WAMADA to move forward with this project so it can advance to the zoning commission where there will be a lot of detailed design and transportation review and where stakeholders and city agencies will have the opportunity to provide a lot more input. We're enthusiastic to see this project move forward in order to fulfill the city's goals for creating a more sustainable, transit-oriented city. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Thomas to be followed by Robert Whitaker.
Thank you for being here and having some community input that is needed. I'm standing in support of the current proposal. I'm noticing I'm quite in the minority of voices here. The normal voice for this seems to be a middle-aged or older person who has a single-family home in the area. I rent here. I've only been here for only a year, and I know people turn their nose up to that and say, "Well, I've been here forty years," but I think I add value to this community. I didn't know very much about it before coming here. I was priced out of places closer to the city center but wanted to have a more urban lifestyle and be able to live close to the subway. So I am here and grow to love Tacoma. Me and my wife here, we've gotten involved with many things. Cleanup days, the new Tacoma radio station, I'm gonna volunteer for that. We just had a meeting this week. My wife is planning on selling some of her homemade products at Trove. She also volunteers at the animal shelter in Georgia. These are the kind of opportunities that Tacoma has offered us, and we love that about it. I support the seventy-two feet and the lots of units that are in this building because it will open Tacoma up to more people that, like me, are interested in community, interested in building relations with neighbors, and having something that matters, some kind of value of place. I'm not interested in what Adams Morgan has, and I'm not interested in, like, going to bars and spending my money everywhere like the Washington Post likes to present people my age to everyone. I'm interested in things that are a little more lasting, a little more important to me, and those values line up with Tacoma well, I think. People that move into this building will flock to Tacoma because of these things that Tacoma can offer at a more affordable price than other places near the city center. I do think we should make demands, though. This is the first time I've seen that color graphic. It looks okay. I mean, the facade needs to match the area. I agree with that. And we need to demand as a community that the green space, the existing one that's gonna stay, becomes a park. EYA has hinted that they're willing to help fund things that are... Right now, it sucks. Like, I went to go play frisbee there a couple weeks ago because I wanted to play frisbee, and it was, like, really tall grass. And I know WAMADA is the one that owns that, so they need to do better, and EYA needs to... They have an opportunity to actually improve that, and I think we should really fight for that. This is for the future of Tacoma. It's a great place. It seems like that most people are unwilling to share it, and I think that's the problem.
Thank you. Robert Whitaker to be followed by Tracy Kaufman.
My name is Minister Robert Whitaker. I've been living here in the community around forty-plus years, and I don't have a prepared speech, but I have to say this. What attracted me to the area is the bucolic nature of this location in Tacoma Park. It's unlike living in the city, and we'd like it to remain that way. It's a low-density area. It has always been low-density. Seventy-two-foot-high building is much too high. It's out of context. It's like the exorcist. That's what this building is like. And that took place over there on Barker Hill Road near the Matha High School, not over here in Georgetown, as the movie depicted. So that was this kind of area that they're dealing with here. You're telling us one thing, and you're doing something else. You want us to look to the left, and you go into the right. Now, it is wrong for you to come into a long-established, historic community and disrupt the tranquility that exists here. We are not in opposition to the building, but seventy-two feet is too high. Lower the building to, like, the building that's being built right now, right on the Maryland side. Seventy-two foot, no way. We need a low building that's in conformity with the existing federal laws. There are no apartment buildings, per se, except the senior system building that was mentioned earlier down the street on the Maryland side. That's the only high-rise building in sight here, and that's what we like. You come out here, you can breathe fresh air early in the morning. Me and my dog do it for forty years, where he's the third or fourth dog I got that's lasted that long. So anyway, this is, like I say, a monster. It's the exorcist, and we know what happened with that type of monster, and we don't want that in this community. Secondly, we can't trust the parties involved because they're all about money. They're never money grabbers. There's more to life than money. I mean, you need money because that's the new flower. That's how we get things happening. That's how we plow the ground now, with money, paper money. But we don't need money to replace the tranquility and the lifestyle that people are attracted here for. Sure, a big old high-rise building, you bring in a whole lot of people, and you got all this congestion all of a sudden, all this traffic pollution, all this other stuff, that we don't have now. And that's the great thing about living here. It's a wonderful place to raise a family. It's like living in the country, and we want it to remain that way. So we are saying, just because we don't have the right to vote and we didn't really lose that, it's just with the first exodus from the city, people stopped voting, and now all of a sudden, we can't vote anymore. But you could always vote in the District of Columbia. There was never no time that you couldn't vote. You don't hear nobody on the Senate Council talking about that. They're talking about making this a state. What the hell kind of situation is that? How could DC be a state and it's the capital of the whole country? Come on. You gotta have some kind of common sense. What are we paying these people for? Just to keep on sticking their hand in my pocket and taking money and calling themselves politicians? Everybody rob the people in DC because ain't nobody gonna do nothing about it because we can't vote in Congress and we gave that up? Come on. We're not gonna give this up. We're gonna fight this thing all the way to the ground, and it's no problem for you all to lower that building below seventy-two foot, be in conformity with what's already here, and let it stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Kaufman to be followed by Margaret Salazar.
My name's Tracy Kaufman, and I... My husband and I have lived in Tacoma Park for almost twenty years, and like everyone in this room, we love our neighborhood. I believe this is one of those rare moments when a good opportunity presents itself at the right time and hope that we will not allow what I believe to be a vocal minority of people to squander this opportunity. So I have several specific points I'd like to make. Location. We have a location that is not only currently underutilized for the valuable real estate that it occupies, but a site that is appropriate to build on and is begging to be used. Sustainability. We have an opportunity to build a higher-density, multifamily housing near a transit center. We can all build solar panels and buy geothermal systems and push mowers, but these all pale in comparison to our individual consumption for our transportation needs. Size of the project. This seems to be the crux of the debate tonight. Originally, I understand this property was designated for many more units. Lots of folks complained and that number has been lowered. To me, this means fewer opportunities to incorporate in affordable units on a site that should include opportunities for low-income people to live. The height of this project is dictated by zoning and planning boards, as been talked about before, and I believe the height currently slated for this property is appropriate for this location. Easy access. Buses, cars, bikes, and pedestrians all need access to this site. The site offers ample opportunity to coordinate all public access, and I believe that the developer has succeeded in doing this well for many of its other projects. The developer. We have a really good developer with a track record, with a solid track record, who is committed to doing the right thing for our community. Let's try to work with them. Overall design. While the royal design phase of this project is yet to come, I particularly like the fact that the development, as is currently designed, has a parking garage strategically tucked into the building. The development team has also created courtyards along the building's eastern facade to add relief and scale to the project. So what I've seen and heard during this conversation over the last several months is a vocal set of friends and neighbors who are appropriately advocating for their own self-interest. I don't begrudge them that, but I believe that there are larger neighborhood-wide interests at play as well. This is a long process with lots of opportunity for community input throughout. We should undertake this process with respect, honesty, and open conversation, and not manacalling and personal attacks on those of us with whom you disagree. Let's all agree on one thing. We all want what we believe is best for the community. I for one believe the voting has high-density housing next to metro.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
... highly respected team.
Thank you. Margaret Salazar to be followed by Alex Salazar.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Salazar, and I reside in the Cedar Crossing condo building, which is right next to the metro tracks and very close to the proposed project site. I am very proud to be a renter here in Tacoma. I am a very strong supporter of the proposed development for a number of reasons. First, it will continue to draw more local businesses to the area, contributing to the vibrant walkability of the Tacoma neighborhood. Second, it will help connect the DC side of Tacoma, where I live, with the Maryland-Tacoma Park side, creating a more coherent and inclusive experience for all of us. Third, it will improve the green space in front of the metro so that we can all have a usable public gathering space. And finally, it will improve foot traffic so that I feel safer walking around the neighborhood at night. Now, those are my personal reasons for supporting the project, because I love residing in this neighborhood and I want to see it continue to thrive, but there's much more at stake. You've heard a lot of speakers talk tonight about the need for reduced density and reduced number of units. In my day job, I run national affordable housing programs affecting hundreds of multifamily properties and communities across the country. As an expert in multifamily housing and urban development, I urge you to approve the project with the current number of units and the current density. In fact, we need more units, not less. Here's why. The Washington DC metro area continues to experience tremendous growth. In fact, DC was fifth amongst metro areas across the country for population growth last year, according to the Census. The Washington Council of Governments reports that we're expected to add 1.7 million more residents by 2040. All of this population growth is putting tremendous pressure on housing costs, and it just underscores the tremendous scarcity in rental housing in our region. In 2013, the Washington Business Journal rated Washington DC region as the least affordable city in America, with median housing prices 16.78 times the median income. Nearly one-third of all homes in the DC area cost $500,000 or more. In order to afford a home renting for $1,400 a month, you have to earn at least $56,000 a year, and by the way, good luck finding a home at that price. The evidence is clear. We need more housing options, and we need them yesterday. The proposed development helps us to provide housing for people at a mix of incomes and does it in a smart, appropriate way by setting the units back from the green space and promoting a transit and walkable-based lifestyle. We can't turn our back on good development now and wait for a further housing crisis because if we do, we risk making ill-conceived decisions later, car-based suburban development that will harm our environment and destroy our Tacoma urban village way of life. Please continue to support this development with its current density. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Salazar to be followed by Lorraine Pierceall.
Thank you. My name is Alex Salazar. I'll be a little bit briefer. I support everything my wife just said, and she's much more eloquent than I am, of course. I think a big reason I support the development is because I know EYA is a really... One of the big reasons I support the development is because I think EYA has proven to be a very good partner with these kinds of developments throughout the region. So I think whatever concerns there are that have been voiced, I think should be left at ease because there will be a whole process that people can give input. EYA, in what they have expressed to residents who've been willing to listen, is to go through some sort of community process to really listen to their concerns around the building, around density, around the park, and I think there's a huge opportunity to bring the community together, to actually involve people, particularly in the park, which is very underutilized. You know, metro has a lot of land. It's probably really hard to manage all of that. This is an opportunity to really redevelop the park in a way that really stitches together the, not just the housing around it, but also the path as people go through it and the businesses that are adjacent to it. And I was speaking, just, I'm speaking off the cuff here. I was happy to be speaking to one of the businesses there. They didn't even know that the development at this point was gonna redevelop the park as well. And once I told him that, he was just ecstatic because he himself sees that the amount of people who'll be coming in, once that gets cleaned up, will really be a positive benefit to the neighborhood. I think the other reason is really from a family perspective. My wife and I moved here a few years ago, and, you know, we love the neighborhood and its character, but we also love a little bit more excitement at night. It would be nice to have a few more businesses to go to, and we really want it to be a little bit safer so that we're happy walking our kids, our future kids, and our dog, and it's just a really great atmosphere, and I think this development will really improve the overall neighborhood and really help people like us who really care about the neighborhood and want to live here to continue to live here. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Lorraine Pierceall to be followed by George French.
My name is Lorraine Pierceall. I am here on behalf of Historic Tacoma. Historic Tacoma is the local historic preservation group for Tacoma Park, Maryland and Tacoma, DC. In order to protect our community, we have retained the services of two law firms, the Law Office of Michelle Rosenfeld and also Cultural Heritage Partners, and I have submitted testimony today and will be continuing to submit things to you for the record. Our attorneys request that the WAMADA board for further action and table its consideration of proposed development at the Tacoma Park Metro Station until such time as the FTA has completed its statutory obligations to review the project pursuant to Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act and Section 4F of the Department of Transportation Act. The development, not true, the development is inconsistent with the District of Columbia Central District Plan in several material respects. While I was asked... My actions should be deferred until either the development is redesigned to be consistent with the company's plan, or the company has a plan, is revised with due public process. Now, the third opinion review is valid, that the traffic study performed by Womata significantly underestimated. Traffic impacts of the EYA development is inconsistent with industry standard practices and should be withdrawn before the project moves forward. Number four, Womata with this project is actually a violation of its own policies on, with, on sound growth for communities. And with the density, height, scale, and massing, improper setbacks, and the loss of green space and trees, you are really harming our community and you are causing financial harm to our community with this aggressive development, who also violate our own policies by not working cooperatively with local jurisdictions. And Mr. Wall, I asked you to meet with Historic Tacoma and their neighbors, and you refused. The green buffer areas that were established long ago were established realizing amenity to our community, and their importance then is as the same today. And both of the green space buffer areas are incredibly important, particularly next to our apartment building, and these trade, mature trade green buffers are a part and character defining elements for our historic district, and that's very important. Finally, I'd like to say, one, two thousand attorneys for Historic Tacoma and the City of Tacoma Park requested the final site plan approved by the Womata Board in 1974 and '75. Today, we now have it. The site plan approval is currently underway.
Thank you.
And I ask you to provide it.
Thank you. George French to be followed by Marcy Stickel.
I have lived in Tacoma Park five blocks from this metro station for nearly twenty-five years and have relied heavily on this transportation facility since it opened. I have followed this recent development process from the beginning. I have enjoyed the openness of Tacoma Station, the green spaces, the variety of trees so beneficial in so many ways and crucial to the environment. I do not mind the surface lot because it is open, safe, supports trees, and is a lot less unattractive than structured parking. I do see an advantage to reasonable car-less or car-limited transit-oriented development here, but only constructed on the footprint of the surface parking lot. The testimony of Coalition for Smarter Growth is tainted, not to be trusted. They have a conflict of interest when they accept funding from the developer. And they lobbied hard for the dreadful former project of nearly two, one, nearly one hundred two-car townhouses while saving only a dozen trees in a postage-stamped park. It is time for EYA to go. They have had several cracks at this development project and just can't make it work. It is time to open the process back up to other developers, those who would respect the open green space, the two buffering parks, zoning height restrictions, traffic considerations, and the surrounding historic districts. I desire a farm that can use the buffering grove of trees as an enhancement to the new development, not as an obstacle to be removed. EYA designers have failed too many times to present a desirable concept and project. Since the beginning of this Tacoma Station development project, there have been hundreds of new units constructed and more to be added to the immediate area. I am opposed to doubling the density on this site from what was proposed earlier. Decreasing the density for an allowable development on the site would have a great effect on retaining more open space, lowering building height, decreasing the traffic and congestion, and increasing access to the station. Also, fewer units means less residential parking space is needed. Another benefit of a less massive project is shorter construction time. Recall the never-ending Silver Spring Transit Station fiasco. Womata allowed turning a nice, open tree-accented station into a monument to cracking concrete and construction arrogance. Still unusable after six long years, it has squandered millions of taxpayer dollars. Lowering the project-proposed density should not harm legitimate developers' ability for financial gain, since the land is a virtual gift, a giveaway from Womata.
Thank you. Marcy Stickel to be followed by Pamela Ellison.
Marcy Stickel, regular Tacoma Park Station metro user. Naples, magnolia, white pines, beech, elms, huge white oaks, willow oaks, golden rain tree, honey locusts, hollies, chestnuts, bald cypress, weeping willow, create the cool, lovely, fragrant, soothing green grove adjacent to the garden apartments on Eastern Avenue. Celebrate a green theme, a human-scale garden city apartment theme. The grove is a centerpiece to redevelopment. I oppose the currently proposed Womata-EYA gargantuan, monolithic structure that swallows up our breathable green space. Construct instead human-scale garden apartments, joining any existing ones around a living, breathing grove as their centerpiece. The grove's mature trees provide environmental and health benefits. Lungs of the planet, trees produce and release oxygen, filter pollution from the air, soak up stormwater, absorb greenhouse gases, absorb and block noise. Trees provide us and our homes shade and cool under their canopies and habitat for wildlife. Celebrate the grove. Remember, Tacoma Park is tree city. I enthusiastically request that the irreplaceable grove in all of the existing green spaces at Tacoma Metro Station be protected legally in perpetuity by Womata and EYA for future and current generations. That's the park across from the station and the grove, one enduring visionary gift Womata and EYA can provide. Promote harmony with nature. The location is already walkable, bikeable, busable, metro-carryable to jobs, schools, businesses, entertainment, and recreation. Parking can be incorporated above or below ground. I believe that EYA is, EYA is creative enough to be able to incorporate garden city and garden apartment ideals into its redevelopment, quite an enticement for prospective residents. The grove, along with its garden apartment, provides an oasis in perpetuity, green magnet for new and old residents, as well as new patrons for Metro, Bus &amp; Rail, and T R J, our historic districts of Tacoma Park and Tacoma, DC. Garden city principles include development which enhances the natural environment, strong local cultural recreational shopping facilities and walkable neighborhoods, integrated and accessible transport systems. In fact, seven or five years later, Greenbelt's ideal garden apartments were designed and still exist as pristine rubbons lying gently on the land. That's our vision.
Thank you. Pamela Ellison, followed by Richard Lehman.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Pamela Ellison. I have lived in Tacoma, DC for twenty-eight years, and I object to the characterization of the folks with whom I agree about this development, that it is too big and there are other issues with it, that we are here in our self-interest. I don't live anywhere near the metro station, even though I'm in Tacoma, DC, and there are many other people who have spoken today against the development who do not also, they do not live near the metro station. We are not, none of us is here for our self-interest, number one. And my colleagues have been so eloquent that I will just say a couple of other things. First of all, the buffer park needs to stay, and everybody has said that. But I would also like to add that if EYA were a little bit more creative about the building design, they could keep the buffer park, which is adjacent to the building, to the parking lot, and configure it so that the residents of the new building, which I am not against, for their use as well, okay? But it needs to stay. Second, I think it's an insult that EYA comes in with proposal that is against DC zoning regulations. That's an insult to those of us who live in DC. And the third thing is that I am one of these old folks, and I am not handicapped yet, but I need my parking space so that I can go downtown and enjoy the downtown part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Lehman to be followed by Chris Turner. I believe the gentleman is just dropping off his testimony.
I want you to go in, we're gonna talk fast because after minutes, submitted other testimony in '06 and in 2013, should be part of the record. Just gonna address the points raised in flyers and other materials by the Tacoma Right Size people. One about the size, this site should be judged on characteristics appropriate to the site. It's at the center of the community. It has typographical issues that allow for a taller building, besides a fact of which it won't be the tallest building in the neighborhood, there are already two much taller buildings. The third point about traffic backups on Eastern Avenue, the biggest solution to Eastern Avenue is to take off the DC residential parking on the east-west side of the street. All those apartment buildings have onsite parking, but to, when you have the ride-on buses and cars, it's not wide enough for through traffic because of the parking. That would solve tremendous parking, or throughput issues on that street about pedestrian access to metro. Most of the people come on Cedar Street, from either east or west. Eastern Avenue walking to the metro, they go through the parking lot, which is not best practice by any means. This project will result in significant improvements in that area regarding parking for metro riders, yes. Speaking of constraints, which we're not talking about, or trade-offs, a bigger building allows underground parking, it's too expensive otherwise. You can have your parking. I bike, I'm fifty-four, I hope to still be biking in twenty years or more, but these are trade-offs. If you shrink the project, you can't do other things like keep green buffers or have underground But improvements, significant improvements to the other existing open space will be wonderful because, yes, the, the space does suck, as one other person said before. Regarding zoning allowances in the master plan, there's no question that Tacoma Central Plan is out of date significantly. It was designed during the 1990s when DC's conditions were so significantly different. And again, if you talk to anyone in the office plan, and they would, they would agree that the, the plan's precepts aren't really, they're, they're out of date. Finally, about visual blight and out of scale with the community, I can't think of a bigger visual blight than that parking lot. That's the worst visual blight in the neighborhood, and this would be way better. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Turner to be followed by Dr. Julie Bodie. Thank you, we'll, we'll do that, thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Porter. My name is Chris Turner. I live here on the Tacoma, DC side. I grew up in Tacoma, DC. I attended this school. I attended Gonzaga for high school. I did the youth orchestra program at Coolidge. I went to AU for undergrad, and I went to Howard for law school. Earlier today, I spoke with Mr. Wall, and I think we both agreed, there is a federal final environmental impact statement on the metro website. So this is a big document that anybody can look at. When Cheryl Court of the Coalition for Smarter Growth and Jack Lester of EYA talk about the underutilized parking lot, or that it's half, half-empty, that's by design. The federal environmental impact statement said there would be no commuter parking here. So what I think is important is for everyone at Womata to remember, that land, federal money was used for the metro system. The Federal Transit Administration, the federal government, they own, they, they have an interest in this land. So I think, Mr. Wall, you agree that a joint development project has to follow the Federal Transit Administration Joint Development Project guidelines. Those guidelines have very specific requirements that I'm not sure EYA has even looked at or if they're following. Now, the letter that they sent, it's dated May 27th, the EYA letter to the neighborhood, but it only came a few days ago. It said, "EYA is working with the, with Womata to build a new residential apartment community at the existing Tacoma Metro Station parking lot." Well, I'm for that, but they're not gonna build just in the parking lot, they're gonna build in the buffer park, and the buffer park is part of the, the design. That, that metro station didn't just appear one day, it was designed by Womata, by the DC City Council. That buffer park is there because in part, that, it's not just a metro station, it's a bus station too. There are diesel buses there, or hybrid diesel buses. So please be aware, there's a reason why that station was designed that way. There's a reason that parking lot is partially empty at certain times of the day. And then, as someone else pointed out, if you go to the Coalition for Smarter Growth website, they have a EYA logo on their website, they're getting money from EYA. They're not even a 501(c)(3). They're getting, they're using the Piedmont Environmental Council as their parent in Warrenton, Virginia. So I, I question EYA, and I question the Coalition for Smarter Growth. They also, by the way, wrote, "Build in the parking lot," or that EYA said, "Build in the parking lot." I'm for building in the parking lot, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Julie Bodie to follow, be followed by Richard Van Meter. Dr. Julie Bodie. All right, Richard Van Meter to be followed by Catherine Tunis. Richard Van Meter. All right, Catherine Tunis to be followed by Gregory Bordnawski.
Hello, how are you? Catherine Tunis, I'm president of the Southeast Sligo Citizens Association, a position that council member, board member Porter held twenty-something years ago.
A few years, yes.
And we discussed this development at our meeting in last October. The Saska area is located about one to three miles away from the metro station, and so that neighborhood has some particular interests that they wanted to present to the board. Number one is preserve the green space. It is not an empty space. It is extremely important for commuters and to maintain proper mental health and good mood and all sorts of stuff, and also provide some shade while we're waiting for the buses. All development should be transit-oriented, planned for growth, and have adequate facilities for pedestrian, pedestrians, bus riders, and biking. We certainly agree with the concerns expressed by the community members that this building is too big, that it has a very strong visual impact on the community, there's, serious traffic impact, and will increase the demand for parking in the area. This is not, as just currently designed, this is not a building that will fit into that neighborhood. This is in a Godzilla that will loom over the neighborhood, threatening to eat it at any time. The Saska neighbors have a particular concern about adequate public parking. The prior gentleman made the point that the parking lot was not half-full, so that does not mean that there's no demand for parking, it was designed that way. And so for the Womata analysis to say that there's currently no further need for parking, that was incompetent and inappropriate to say anything like that. Saska recommends that the development have more floor than the current number of parking spaces, excluding those set aside for taxis, zip cars, or any other purposes. There should be adequate provision for parking for those with special needs. People should be able to use their smart trip card to get out of the parking lot. We understand the community concern that we do not want this to become a large commuter garage. There could be limits on time that have been suggested, such as seven-hour limits, that should start should start when somebody starts parking. And we encourage a special pass for people who live one to three miles away and need special accommodations. We should assure that Womata receives adequate revenues for this development. Womata is ours. Metro is ours. I spend more time on the metro than I spend in my living room. This is why people feel so strongly about this, is that this is ours, our community is ours. Womata would want to preserve our community, but we'll want to preserve metro to make sure that it's there for people in the future. And we strongly encourage future discussions with the community. They have been very few and far between to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Bordnawski to be followed by Charles Gorham.
Hi, my name is Greg Bordnawski. I've been an architect for 26 years. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 14 years, and I've done a lot of work in and around historic districts. I usually find myself on the other side of the fence advocating for development, and sometimes you find yourself in a position that you didn't expect. I'm really allowing my comments to just some things that I saw in the plans that I think could improve the project. I imagine that this development is going to go forward. They usually do. But a couple of things struck me. The first thing is Eastern Avenue is a residential area. Its buildings are two or three stories at most, so the precedent for a taller building I find unconvincing. The setback to the fourth story, I think, is not really working. I think what you really need is something that's a series of three-story buildings across there. Also, the loading dock. I'm not really sure why you would put a loading dock on a valuable piece of street frontage in a basically residential street when you have an alley that you're building as part of your project. There's no reason that I can see, and there's a step in the grade that would allow you to hide it from the adjacent apartments. So I don't know quite why you did that. Recent developments in the area were no more than five stories. I think if you stepped up at the tracks, that might be acceptable, but the bulk facing the neighborhood should definitely be lower. Finally, I think the park or the green space in front of the building on the Eastern Avenue side doesn't really acknowledge the neighborhood. Again, I'm thinking in terms of how to make something that's good development, and as Jane Jacobs said, places where people want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Gorham to be followed by Bev Shenio.
Hi, my name is Charlie Gorham. I live in the Cedar Crossing condominiums at 343 Cedar Street Northwest. It's right across the metro from the current proposed development. And I support the proposed development for three reasons. One, it provides the best benefit to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is growing, and to support the recent development in the community, we need more people. We're fortunate to live in an urban neighborhood that has great metro and bus access. Since the parking lot only offers hourly parking, people rarely park there. We owe it to the greater DC area to use the property to its greatest value, and that is to offer a reasonable housing option so that more people can have access to what we have access to. The specifications, too, the specifications of the proposed development are more than reasonable. Since I moved into the neighborhood, I've noticed that there's a vocal minority of people consistently oppose all development in the neighborhood. Sometimes they're direct about their opposition, and sometimes they're more indirect, which is the case here. While they do offer more viable alternatives or work with people like EYA towards reasonable alterations to current plans, we see things like signs and letters with meaningless buzz phrases, and we see people police on community listservs. Not every aspect of the development is going to win everyone's heart, but the current plans are more than reasonable. And if you ask me, I think it's too small. The proposed building is aligned with the rest of the neighborhood. It provides for a necessary parking for several, but not all residents, which is more than appropriate for the neighborhood, and it maintains an adequate amount of green space. Third, the vocal minority that I spoke of claims that this development will harm the people who live the closest to it. I live right there. I live across the metro from the proposed development, and I think it will only enhance my life. The current parking lot is depressing, and it's useless. I welcome the idea of more people, more neighbors, and more activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Bev Shenio followed by David Frye. Okay, David Frye followed by Elizabeth Merritt.
Thank you very much. I'm David Frye. I'm a 26-year DC Tacoma DC resident, homeowner, taxpayer, husband, father of kids educated in DC Public and Charter Schools. Build it. It can't happen soon enough for me. Somebody said, talked about irresponsibility before. To me, it's irresponsible that the site has remained vacant and in public ownership for 40 years. Don't lock yourself in on the green space. The one acre that was proposed in the Tacoma Central Plan is more than enough. You are the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Agency, not the Washington Metropolitan Area Parks Agency. It is not part of your mission to provide parks and recreation to this area, or any area. Effective use of the resources that you hold for the benefit of the entire system is your mission. If you turn this entire site into a park, the next time somebody complains to you about delayed maintenance, higher fares, the poor condition of cars, your response should be that, well, we have some surplus land that we could sell. But instead, we set it aside for a park in an uprightly classed area where you can hardly find a detached single-family house for under $500,000. God tell that in southeast. No, we couldn't use this land for the benefit of the, to sell it for the benefit of the entire system, to get land back on the tax rolls, to get taxpayers back in the city. We've had to provide a park for these people. Tacoma Park, Maryland has its own park system. There are 600-foot-deep yards over there. They have enough green space. We don't need, you don't need to be providing these people with green space. One acre is more than enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Merritt to be followed by Nancy Courier. Elizabeth Merritt. Okay, Nancy Courier to be followed by David Reiser. I think it's on.
All right, means it's on.
Yes.
My name is Nancy Courier. Hello to everybody. I live at 7307 Holly Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I have for 40 years, and I've worked downtown for a long time using the subway. I do very much like the subway. I and my fellow Maryland and DC neighbors frequently traverse the narrow intersection of Holly and Eastern avenues by foot and by car.
Can you hold the microphone close? Thank you.
By adding 200 or more cars to the immediate community, the EYA plan will congest that intersection and promote accidents in that intersection that will pollute the air with auto-exhaust. The 20-plus trees on the buffer green space won't be able to help us, for EYA plans to completely eliminate that piece of land. I feel that the EYA proposal discounts my interests. It discounts those similar to mine of my Maryland and DC neighbors. I hope that you will not accept it unless the number of apartment units and therefore cars are substantially lowered and without retaining the green space buffer. I'm in favor of that green space buffer. Thank you.
Thank you. David Reiser followed by Bradley Green.
I'll be very quick, because you guys look like you're just enduring this, and I think it's really important that you listen as opposed to just endure. I'm sorry. I think it's important that you listen, not just endure. I understand it's hard. This isn't about Maryland versus DC. I've been a member of the Tacoma community for 22 years, most of them in the District of Columbia. I now live in Maryland, but I was part of the planning that went into the central district plan, and I would have the same view if I was still living right up the street on Seventh Street as I do now. The plan you have is not smart growth because you do not have a walkable community. What you have is a plan that is designed to maximize revenue from a particular parcel, not a sensible integrated development. I would love it if you would put together a plan to do economic development, to put a grocery store, and enough things in an immediate neighborhood that people actually could, as EYA's slogan has it, "Life within walking distance." But that's not true. And all I ask is that you stand, each one of you, spend a week standing on Carroll Avenue at 5:00 in the afternoon, or on Eastern Avenue when two buses are crossing against each other, and decide whether this is a good plan given the limits of the existing non-metro infrastructure. I want metro to succeed. I want development in Tacoma to succeed. But this is a plan that is constrained by the size of your parcel and not by what makes smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Green to be followed. Sorry about that. Bradley Green followed by Jack Sullivan.
Thank you. My name is Bradley Green, and I live three blocks from the proposed development. I support EYA's proposed development for the Tacoma Metro Station. I believe the develop will benefit the entire neighborhood and is of an appropriate scale given its proximity to high-capacity transit. People who live in this development will do so largely because of the easy access it provides to metro. As a result, many occupants will not own a car. Those that do will drive less than people living further from the station. Thus, the impact on area traffic will not be nearly as great as the size of the development would otherwise suggest. More importantly, however, this development will energize the sleepy commercial district adjacent to the station. These businesses need more residents within an easy-walking distance to thrive. A thriving business community in turn will enable these same residents to walk to goods and services they would otherwise have to drive to, thus further reducing the number of cars on area streets. The larger Tacoma community, of course, also benefits from a successful commercial core, while at the same time retaining its residential character. In other words, this is a development that will improve both access to metro and life in the neighborhood. For these reasons, I support the EYA development. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Sullivan followed by Barbara Whitney. I apologize, that's not the best setup for the microphone.
Hi, my name is Jack Sullivan. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, and I'm a landscape architect. Most of my issues are not about the development itself. I think the idea is great. I hope that something really beautiful happens out of this development, but right now, that's not what's happening, and therefore I don't support this particular scheme as it's presented. First of all, I think there's a little bit of a bait and switch that happened. If you go online and you start to look at some of the illustrations for the proposed project, it actually looks very handsome with recessed windows and a sense of masonry materials and a nice solid feel, as if it has been and will last a very long time. What we see here, I think, is not that. I think it's a very irresponsible, mal designed with bad materials, and I think it's got to be reconsidered. But more importantly, I think the idea of saving the park is a very good thing that's happening. That wouldn't have happened without getting some height, and I don't mind that the building is kind of on the high side. What I do mind, though, is that there isn't a buffer to the apartments on Eastern Avenue. I think that's a very big concern. I think that not only the size of the tracks, but also the distance from the driveway and the house of those apartments should be recognized, and that those people who live there should have as much of the amenity of the green space as possible. I think one of the biggest problems I see is that they have not gone underground, and by not going underground, they've gone higher up. So they're trying to avoid the cost of putting something below grade, and in the process, they're creating a very uncomfortable, very unattractive building that we'll see at eye level, that we'll see full of metro, which is elevated looking across at this building. So I really hope that this will be redesigned, perhaps lower than the number of units, but I don't know. My calculations, I think you can still have a responsible development at about 165 to 175 units. I think they're planning somewhere around 215 at this point. I'm not sure about the count. But I think there's something that needs to be addressed in terms of the character of this place, because that's what Tacoma Park is all about, whether it's DC or Maryland. And I think you have to have a really good building, and this is not a really good building.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Whitney followed by Peter Fiden.
Hi, my name is Barbara Whitney, and I'm not going to repeat things. I just want to say that I think what we need to think about mostly and focus on is ease of accessibility and safety. And those are the things that when I look at the pictures and I look at the plans, I don't see details for those things. It's like, yes, we will upgrade the sidewalks, yes, there will be this, but I haven't seen real, real plans for the safety, especially the safety, and then ease of accessibility. One person mentioned opening up on the west side with the bicycle commentary. Is there a possibility of doing that, to really connect the DC side on the other side of the tracks to the DC side on the Maryland side of the tracks? I don't know, but couldn't that tunnel be continued? That's one, just one item. And then, without a buffer and without a setback, how safe is it really for all the people that are going on all those sidewalks? And I think that that should be the first concern, really. And then after that, you see how big a building you can build and exactly where you can build it. And that's what I'm hoping is going to happen here after all of our input. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Fiden followed by Brian Robinson.
Hi, I'm Peter Fiden. I live on Eastern Avenue across from the project. I've lived there for 25 years. I've always loved the neighborhood. The one negative from the day I moved in was the fact that we were across from a parking lot, and I'd always hoped that there would be some development there. So I was guardedly optimistic when about 14 years ago, Womata's chosen developer, EYA, presented a plan. Unfortunately, it was a plan that the community could not support for two quite different reasons. One was that it was going to use the bulk of the both green spaces, and the second was that it was not smart growth in any stretch because it was townhouses with two-car garages. So after some very limited engagement and a lot of conflict, the Tacoma Central District Plan was devised to create a master plan for the community, not just for that site, but for the whole area, including Blair Road, all the way up to the District Maryland border. It includes all the way up to the 7-Eleven, the site that's currently being developed next to the 7-Eleven. And the plan was a relatively good compromise, I thought, and I think many others thought, in that it limited development to four stories, called for up to 95 units, called for a 50-foot buffer park between any development and the existing apartment buildings. And then, after a couple more years of very slow movement, the plan totally died because of the recession. And then we've come back suddenly, five years later, and the developer who fought vehemently against any redesign to incorporate smart-growth principles suddenly was using smart-growth rhetoric to justify what you might call vertical sprawl, and has packaged redevelopment and has misconstrued opposition to earlier development as opposition to development per se. I would say that everybody that I've been associated with who have been opposed to this project are for development on the parking lot, and probably always have been. The problem is that this has taken 14 years and nothing has happened. That's not a reason to That's not a reason to develop it now. It is a reason to get serious about development. And the seriousness has to start with some reasonable, constructive engagement, where we get beyond the rhetoric of smart-growth, and we get beyond constraining opposition as opposition to development comprehensively, to a true dialogue that incorporates issues of density, height, mass, and borders. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Robinson, followed by Ian Barkley.
Hi, Brian Robinson. I represent Friends of Old Tacoma, Bi-jurisdictional Community Development Organization. We also run the Electric Made Communities Arts Center, which directly faces the proposed development site, and we are one of the businesses that EYA offered to tear down 10 years ago as a benefit to the community in return for taking away green space. Fortunately, none of the businesses on our side of the street were interested in their proposal. So they were actually going in the opposite direction from what we and other organizations were trying to convince them as needed. So this is the plan which we presented there over 10 years ago. It's also a plan that even the folks who are against development would not let us present, although, given a chance to present it to the ANC, we will not, given a chance to present it to anyone. The local elected officials refused to agree with us. So basically, our plan was about smart growth and also about dealing with the issue of the green space. Now, as you can see in this plan, there are three parts to the green space. There's the so-called Village Grove, which nobody wants to get rid of. It's a very usable off-way triangle or square area that was surrounded by businesses and the active part of the metro. It's very usable, and you see people picnicking, and it's surrounded by mature trees. Then you have the so-called Amphitheater, as I call it, which subs. It's surrounded by the bus turnaround. Nobody wants to go there because you have few second buses using this sidewalk, this turnaround here. They are preserved, the bus lanes exactly as it is, because they misinterpreted the previous sentiments as saying, "We want to preserve the bus lanes exactly as well," which is a hideous suburban-style bus turnaround, which makes half of the green space unusable. So that's all in the current plan. The current plan will not do anything to make the green space usable, because it will retain the bus configuration as it is. Also, it will eliminate the buffer, which is key, because it's the only thing that provides any kind of separation between the development and the existing homes and apartments. So basically, what we're saying is, there's also the issue of the underground spring, which the current building would be built right on top of. This parcel was the spring around which the entire community was built in the 1880s. There was a spring here, so they put a rail道station here. It was called the Middle Spring. Big Spring was in Maryland.
Thank you.
And it went under Maple Avenue and Cedar Avenue.
Thank you. Brian, thank you very much. Thank you. Ian Barkley, followed by Shannon Crockett.
And for Mr. Wall, since you're a newbie in this area, I want to point out to you that when the station was originally built, which a lot of people didn't want, we were content with it being in Silver Spring. We saw it as a crime elevator, and it has turned out to be that. And I get EYA. EYA wants to jump the shark. They're about making a lot of money, and I understand that, but this has to follow procedure, and it has to follow the environmental impact statement, which Chris Turner mentioned, and it has to conform to the community. Now, I, for one, am opposed to development, because that land was taken through either eminent domain or the threat thereof, and as such, it was taken for transportation. It was not taken to convert to private gain for EYA. And that land should be held in reserve, all of it, for future transportation needs. I remind everybody that London, England already has congestion charging, and it has been discussed in Washington, it's being discussed in New York, as it's a new end to the rural population in this area. This is our nation's capital. I predict that in the future, we have to look 75 years at least. That's what Social Security does as an actuarial. I think it's all important to look at 75 years ahead in order to try to gauge what transportation needs. You're going to have the world of redevelopment, and as far as I'm concerned, that green space, if you convert it to private use, which is what you will do when you sell it to EYA, you're going to acknowledge the fact that it's no longer available for transit. Who knows what's going to be needed in the future? We could have future need for bus, we could have future need for bicycle, and everybody seems to be into bicycling today. We could have some kind of car-share program. But Washington, down on it, as Will Rogers, one of our favorite people, God rest his soul, said, "They stop making land." John Lennon said, "Any fool can cut a tree down." Washington destroyed that green space and avoided it being saved for future transit needs, which I suggest to you, that you folks on Wamata are either fiduciaries, and I'm not going to argue the legal technicalities of a fiduciary, but you're trustees and stars of the future of our nation's capital. This is just an old city in the United States. This is the gateway to our community for the whole nation. And when people get off that subway, they should see a lot of green space. And for your information, the land there was unproven for land that was taken and ran on the track bed. So us people on Wamata do have some standing on this issue. Thank you very much, and I wish you best.
Thank you. Shannon Crockett, and then—okay. And then Delegate Hucker has just arrived and will fit you in.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Cocket, and I'm here on behalf of Carol Livia-Harahn. I'm representing North Washington Neighbors Incorporated. It's a nonprofit educational organization that really did a lot in the Brightwood, Manor Park, Shepherd Park, and Tacoma-DC neighborhoods to push for integrated communities. It was founded in 1958. We, as a board of Neighbors, Inc., do support additional development on the side of the Tacoma Metro Parking Lot, but we have some five main concerns about the proposed development by EYA. A lot of those concerns have been expressed by others. I think the main thing is that, as a resident of this neighborhood in Tacoma-DC for over 30 years, let me just back off and say, you know, I've used the subway. We understand that Wamata needs to maximize development at the metro stations, and we do support that. However, this is a very historic community, both in Tacoma-DC and in Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I guess what we are looking for is something that's more in keeping with the Tacoma Central Plan. That is not an old plan. Others have characterized it as being out of date. It was—it's from 2002. But we think it needs to be development that—we're—the developer obviously has to make a profit, but we're hoping that it won't be out of character. I mean, I think you've already heard that there are a lot of single-family homes, both on the DC side and the Tacoma Park, Maryland side, and then you have the affordable housing. So we're hoping that the height of the complex won't exceed 50 feet, that even with the step-back, we think the 70-foot-plus height of the project is just a little bit—it's totally out of character in Historic Preservation District, both in DC and Maryland. But, you know, we think it could be a fairly large complex. Then, the other concern we have is about keeping the green spaces as buffers. I'm not an architect. I don't have the expertise, but other people have spoken tonight. They seem to have some interesting ideas about ways to improve the project, to make it more safe, and still keep—I—I was concerned when I heard about the loading dock, particularly, about maybe being a hazard to pedestrians. That came up this evening. So I'm hopeful—I—I realize my time is counting down. I'm hopeful that the project can be reconfigured to save those green spaces. We'd like to have a tree preservation and mitigation plan, and we'd also like the traffic study just closing up to take into account all the existing development that's taking place in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Delegate Tom Hucker.
Thank you very much, Mayor Porter, and members of the board. We're joined by a very enthusiastic train rider, my son Sam. Thank you very much for holding this hearing and for accommodating my family's schedule. I appreciate it, and I understand you've given—Senator Raskin gave me the balance of his time, so I'll try to fill in quickly. I know you have a joint letter from him and I, and Delegates Mazir and Hickson as well. And so our—let me just hit a few of the highlights rather than repeating all that, but we're asking you to schedule action on approval of the report for the compact hearing only after a more thorough review of the concerns that you're hearing tonight, which we've been hearing for a long time, about the impact of the proposed development on adjacent residential neighborhoods, both in DC and in Maryland. Specifically, we'd like to see a neighborhood design working group created to ensure proper consideration. Ultimately, we think this will result in a better project. We know projects like this have a lot of unintended consequences. We think we're going to get a better project if they're all considered on the front end, rather than trying to mediate them on the back end. We certainly don't want our constituents and ourselves to be shut out of future decisions. And so specifically, we urge you not to take action that would send the proposal to the district's PUD process. And we say this—I mean, Mayor Porter, you especially know us all very well. We're supporters of smart-growth, we're supporters of transit-oriented development. We're not NIMBYs, but we want to get the details right on this project. And again, we think we have the time to do that. According to EYA's own timeline, this will be years in the making, so it makes sense to get the details right on the front end. Thoughtful concerns have been raised in specific areas you've heard tonight about the overall height of the project, about the extent of setback from roads, the loss of green space, the increased traffic into our Maryland neighborhoods, and to less access to the metro station. None of these have been adequately addressed, and again, we have the time to do that. One in particular we've heard about is reduction of public parking spaces. We've heard from constituents who are daily Wamata riders, who usually walk to the metro, but they've pointed out on certain days when they're picking up their kids, they're picking up groceries, they like to drive, they know the parking lot now fills up very quickly. If there's a loss of parking spaces, they feel like they'll be driving to work now, not taking Wamata, because they won't be able to run their errands and take care of their families the way they can now if we lose those parking spaces. And importantly, neighbors have expressed widespread concerns about why a project like this would exceed DC's zoning requirements and the parameters set aside in the—set out in the Tacoma Central District Plan. Why would we have a Central District Plan if it could be so easily dismissed when it's been agreed on by all the stakeholders? Leaving concerns like that just to the PUD process, we feel, will shut Marylanders out of key decisions that will affect our constituents greatly. So in summary, let me just join my colleagues in asking for a neighborhood design working group with appropriate representation from Maryland, DC, and managed by Wamata and EYA. Please don't proceed to final action to advance the project to the PUD process until the working group finishes its work and takes these into consideration. You know the phrase about "good fences making good neighbors." There's no fence in this—in this case, nor do we want one. So to continue to be good neighbors without the accountability that a fence provides, we really need a path to a policy that respects all the stakeholders, rather than shutting any of us out. So thank you very much again tonight.
Robert Miller, followed by Kathy Carroll.
I'm Bob Miller. I live across the street. My wife and I have been longtime members and supporters of historic Tacoma. In fact, she designed the current newsletter. She lives now in older Colorado, in a ranch house, after stints in Los Angeles and San Francisco. So yes, we are together. We're just almost bi-coastal, but not yet bipolar. We're working on that. I was a developer for many years. I did 95 Victorian rehabs, and I live in my last one. Right now, I like everything on one floor, but I do have ballisters on my staircase so I can pull myself up and grab them on my way down. Now, I live, in effect, two blocks from where this development takes place. EYA is an excellent developer. They have many different developments of similar size around the metropolitan area. So we are lucky, basically, at having the best developer of this type of project in the metro area. Now, I'm not—I don't want a smaller development. We should have density around major transport nodes. And what's interesting about, you know, what is the demographic housing role of Tacoma versus other parts of Washington? This is where young people move when they have decided to sleep with the same person time and time again. And I know about this because I control some rental properties in the area. So this is—this is why people move here, because they want kind of a bit of the burbs in town. And, you know, they want to be away—they want to be away from, you know, frantic interactions down on Dupont Circle. So this is an appropriate development for the metro. It's an appropriate developer. There'll be some changes made there. Everybody—I mean, a lot of people bark about that green area across the street from 7-Eleven. I've never seen anybody use that space. I'm not camping out there. But it's—you know, it's a—it's not a New England green where you graze sheep. Sheep, and, you know, happy to give part of that up. If it was designated as a place where the—where the people come together for Tacoma Park for celebratory activities, it would be good, but it doesn't seem to be serving any purpose at all. Okay, I encourage you to back this, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you very much. And I would ask that the people in the audience please respect the speakers. Kathy Carroll, followed by Clifford Schwartz.
This is okay.
Kathy Carroll.
She was here.
Okay. Clifford Schwartz, followed by Diana Vitoudis.
Hi, my name is Clifford Schwartz. I live in Tacoma Park. I'm a homeowner. I've lived in Tacoma Park for about 10 years with my wife and my daughter. We've invested in a house that we own. It was important to us to move to a beautiful community with this type of character. I am for reduced density, but for a reason that I haven't heard too much focused on, and that is for safety with the roads in the surrounding area. I specifically live on Route 410, Ethan Allen Avenue, where the congestion is so high, and it's right by the—what's called the Tacoma Park Junction. And it's so high already that fire trucks, ambulances, police cars have to go around cars in opposing lanes, forcing the cars in those opposing lanes to literally drive on the sidewalk, and for pedestrians to have to get out of the way. I know this because I live on Ethan Allen Avenue, and I see this every single day, because ambulances, fire trucks, police cars need to go, especially to the hospital, and they're traveling west— traveling west toward that god-awful Tacoma Junction with a dysfunctional light, with only one lane going in either direction. It's a danger for the people in the ambulances that they can't get through. It's a danger for the pedestrians. And when cars have to drive on sidewalks to get out of the way of emergency vehicles, something has to be done about it. I'm told that because it's a state road, that there's a two-to-three-hour wait for them to address the lights and the issue. And my point and connection is that by increasing the density of this development, that's going to make the peripheral roads worse, and in particular, a road like 410, even more dangerous than it already is. And I hope that if this development does move forward, that you or EYA or whoever it is works a lot closer and better with the State Highway Commission or agency, whatever it's called, to remediate those kind of issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana Vitoudis, and followed by Paul Weckstein.
Good evening. I've been a commuter. I've been using the Tacoma Park Metro for 30 years. I hope to use it for another 30. I just want to say a few things. First of all, do no harm. Secondly, leave well enough alone. Thirdly, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And fourthly, don't take paradise and put in a parking lot. We already have a parking lot at Tacoma Park Metro. I'm sorry that some people consider it a blight. I wish it were planted with cherry trees. All I know is that it's a beautiful sight as I come back from downtown Washington where I work every day. I did look at the plan that EYA has proposed, and one thing that I really like about it is the swimming pool. Wow, they're going to have a swimming pool. And I hope they really enjoy it. Maybe I'll get a glance of it from the platform, but no, I won't, because my view will be blocked. The building will be that high, and the green space by the 7-Eleven, well, I might as well not be there, because I won't see that either. I know that many people think that the green space is unfunctional, because they don't see people picnicking on it and children playing underneath. Well, I don't want children playing in bus fumes, and that's the reason they were there, that green space is there to filter the bus fumes. And once anything is built in that area, there's going to be a limit to transit development. That's the reason I moved to Tacoma Park, because it provides easy access to Washington, D.C. Hopefully, it will provide easy access for the incredible number of people who are moving into this area. I see the development. I see the, in the past 10 years, the high-rise buildings and apartment buildings in Silver Spring and the highways and the development in Tacoma Park. It's not about saving parks and recreation for those of us who do have single-family homes. It's about preserving a little bit of an oasis for all of you, so that you can breathe a little bit as you get off the metro and walk through an open area. And one thing I did want to say is if EYA is really interested in building the community or everyone wants to encourage community, build a community pool there. That would be fantastic, right on the site of the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Weckstein, followed by Thomas Fedewa.
I've been a resident in the area for 33 years, first in D.C. in a, for D.C. purposes, a high-rise apartment, which I enjoyed tremendously, and then Tacoma Park in Maryland.
Can you hold the microphone a little closer?
And I've relied very heavily on the metro for all that time. I moved to Tacoma Park not to be away from the city, to be part of an urban village, a green urban village. And so, I'm not against development by any means around metro. However, there are clearly a lot of issues that have been raised about this particular development, and trying to make it fit well and meet all the requirements that it should be meeting, which have now been exacerbated with a large development like this by what one speaker described about the change in the building plans and architectural plans. But whatever your approach to those issues, to then go and say, "We're going to stick this building in that part of the property that is most," to begin with, is out of place architecturally with everything else, to put it in that part of the lot, which is closest to the residential areas, both the apartment buildings and houses, is really to stretch the limits with very little setback and destroying what is the most, the densest, green space on the whole property. And that is the most critical to housing around it. So, I think it needs to go back through the process that Representative Hucker has described, where these things get taken more seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Fedewa, followed by Jessica Landman.
Good evening. My name is Tom Fedewa, and I graduated from Catholic University in 1960. I've been around town for a while. I left and have returned, and we have chosen to retire here. We live at 800 on Elder Street, not far from the project. A lot of good points made tonight, and it's not necessary to repeat them. However, I would think the choices are, do we want a metro station that looks like Silver Spring and the community that surrounds it? Or do we want a metro station that looks like Columbia Heights and the buildings that surround it? Or do we want something that looks more like, I don't know the name of the station, but it's out there by Denny's in southeast? And the buildings that are not around it? There will be buildings. However, I remember working in Camden, New Jersey, and we took children out to feel grass and to look at trees. They had never seen them in their lives. That's not going to happen here, but that building sitting right over there, that just doesn't cut it for a beautiful piece of architecture in a city whose, I think our motto was "The City of Trees." And I'll just close by saying, I'm one of seven boys. My father insisted that we all know that well begun was half-done, badly begun probably never done. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Landman.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience. I'm not going to repeat many of the excellent arguments that you have heard tonight in favor of a fair process that yields excellent results by including neighbors on both sides of the line. I think, I'm hoping that you heard our Maryland representative loud and clear talking about a process that will yield fair and reasonable results. Instead, I want to talk about specifically two fallacies that I've heard repeated here this evening that I find troubling. First is that the park, nobody uses it, it's not usable, and it, quote, "sucks," unquote. Well, let's talk for just a moment about why the park is as, let's say, has a lot of potential and hasn't had much of that potential realized. The reason is because Womata has actually actively discouraged anybody in the neighborhood from turning it into an active and functional park, because it has been land preserved as reserved for transit uses, which is, follows Womata's charter to do that. Let's not think of this as a park that's failed. Let's think of it as a park that has not been able to be properly developed as green space, because that opportunity has not existed. And let's build into what happens at this site, an opportunity to turn that into the vibrant green space that we need. Indeed, it's been studied and found that this lower part of Montgomery County and this area of D.C. has a deficiency of green space, given the density of population. Secondly, comments that the parking lot is underutilized. Well, what do you expect? Those parking lot signs are labyrinthine. Parking restrictions so complicated that you need a Ph.D. to figure out when you can park, all designed to prevent commuter parking. If the neighborhood could use that parking lot in an efficient and effective way, there is plenty, believe me, plenty of demand for time, for neighbors to park there from time to time and use that site for neighborhood needs. In short, the neighbors around the Tacoma Metro expect and deserve a chance to be part of the design process, both from the Maryland side and the D.C. side. And the current residents in the neighborhood, both homeowners like myself and renters like the ones who live next to the site, should wind up, they deserve and expect, a site that is at least as neighborhood-friendly for them as it will be for whatever new residents wind up in those building, in the building which I anticipate will be built. So, please, don't sacrifice current quality of life in order of the current residents for new residents. Find a way to accommodate the needs of the existing community as you figure out how to make new housing available for new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of folks who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Elliot Queen. First, I'd like to say that, obviously, this project is going forward. I mean, I think that's just the reality of it. There are some assumptions that are being made. First, that the number of cars that this is going to bring into the area, because you're close to metro, that folks will not drive. Well, I'm a living example that that's not the case. I live in, I live three blocks from the metro. I drive every day, and I work downtown. So, that's an assumption. That's not a fact. Now, I've lived in Tacoma Park, D.C. for 40-plus years. As a kid growing up here, and then when I chose to purchase a home, I purchased here. And I think it's important for Womata to remember that people buy in communities for the character of the community. That's the reason you put your money down, the largest purchase you'll ever make, your home. Now, Womata talked about smart growth, and EYA, they talk about smart growth. This isn't smart growth on this parcel. Now, smart growth at Fort Totten is smart growth on the Green Line at Georgia and New Hampshire. That's smart growth. This is not smart growth on a side, on a site this small. In fact, what it does is, it is, makes it high-density. Now, keeping in character with the community, if you're going to build an apartment building, make that apartment building conform with the existing apartments that it'll be right next to. And you have to remember, you have homeowners that are directly across the street. Those homeowners, with a building the size that's proposed, I mean, it'll dwarf the homes. Now, you talk about there are other large buildings that are right behind the 7-Eleven. The difference is, they're not across, directly across the street from residences. They're across the street from businesses and other apartment builders. That makes a difference. So, again, since we know that this is going to happen, build the apartment buildings, but make it conform to the rest of the community. Make it fit. Don't make it an eyesore. I think someone described it as Godzilla. Don't make it look like Godzilla. Make it fit with the community. I mean, there's so many other things that could be pointed out that I think has already been covered tonight, so I won't go over those. So, I'm just saying, make it fit with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? Yes, would you come up and introduce yourself? It's right behind the projector there.
Good evening. I'm Scott Nickerbacher. I live down at 814 Underwood, just down the street.
Could you, could you, your last name is?
Scott Nickerbacher.
Nickerbacher, thank you.
I'm sure you've heard many of the arguments against the development as it stands. Well, while that something's going to go in that spot, and like everybody else, I would just like to see it done right. It's been called smart development, but I believe as the plan stands right now, it's just housing units. So, it would be good to see retail and office space there, too, to truly promote a walkable community. Another concern that I have, that I haven't heard too much about, is whether or not metro itself, can the infrastructure as it exists right now, really support more people. I don't know how many of you came back tonight, this evening. It was, because of problems on the red line, it was, it was a mess at Tacoma, bottlenecks going through the fair gates, and so, when you add more people, especially right on top of the metro, I'm afraid that, how that would affect commuting. So, I don't, I don't know what was said before, so I'm going to keep my speech short, but thank you for hearing us and listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could you come up and introduce yourself?
My name is Lucy McCulak. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, Maryland. I've lived here for 35 years, and I take the metro to work every day. My family has used it, my husband's used it to go to work. And I have to say that I came to this meeting about 7:30 or 8 o'clock, so I missed a lot of the beginning things. But I don't think this development is at all in keeping with what Tacoma Park represents, D.C. side or Maryland side. I think there's, it doesn't look green at all to me, you know, with, with the environment the way it is nowadays. I can't believe that there's no green on the, on the roof, and there isn't a setback. I mean, I just feel like this is, this is not representative of what we stand for here, both Tacoma Park on either side. So, I'm very disappointed in the size of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Alex Jaffee.
I'm Alex Jaffee. I'm a Tacoma, D.C. resident. Just want to say how excited I am about the development moving, the development moving forward and taking its next steps towards building and connecting my side of Tacoma, D.C. to the Tacoma Park, Maryland side of the border, making it safer for us to walk back and forth around the metro, and bringing some more liveliness, walkability to the area as well. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right, seeing no one, we'll conclude the public hearing.